Good evening, West Orange. It is Tuesday, September 6th, 2016, and we're all excited. The fall is around the corner, summer season's over, and first day of school today. So, good luck to all the students, our teachers, administrators, and everyone involved in education for a successful and terrific school year. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger in the West Orange Chronicle on October 14th, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on October 14th, 2015. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokovia?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cirillo?
Present.
Mayor Parisi.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have a house full of baseball players. We have the award-winning West Orange 12U PAL team, the travel baseball team, representing us here today, and we also have the parents, the proud parents. And we're going to have a special presentation, which is going to be moderated by Councilwoman Michelle Castellino. The floor is all yours, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. Hello, 12U baseball team. That was the first day of school back. You had to be excited to go. I see a lot of smile on your parents' faces. So, before we begin, and honor you for your accomplishments, because you really worked hard this summer and accomplished a great deal, I just want to give a little background on how this great team came together and how the two leagues actually merged. A few years back, a few years back, the baseball programs decided the Mountaintop League and the West Orange PAL team, who both have been servicing baseball for many years, we have the West Orange PAL, who is celebrating almost 60 years of programming for youth programming. So, let's give them a round of applause. And the West Orange Mountaintop League had also been servicing baseball for about 50 years, so let's give them a round of applause. And then, we had a lot of effort by our very own West Orange Recreation Department, and I see Rec. Director Edwin Johnson in the back, also serving. So, a few years back, on a request of our Mayor Parisi, who's a very big baseball fan and used to be a PAL player, we decided to create one traveling league for West Orange, which the PAL took over and directed. So, that took a lot of meetings and a lot of efforts, and we really need to give the baseball committee a big round of applause for forming this great group of traveling baseball here in West Orange. So, nice job. Before I call up the committee members and the coaches to announce our young athletes, I'm going to read a citation that the council is going to present to your team. Citation of the West Orange Township Council recognizing the West Orange PAL 12U travel baseball team. The West Orange Council proud to recognize the West Orange PAL 12U travel baseball team, who won the New Providence Goal League 12U Division for the summer of 2016. Previously, in the spring, they were runner-up in the Monville League and finished third in the annual Matt Olive Memorial Day Weekend Blast Tournament. They competed in Cooperstown this past July, playing Verona in a doubleheader at Double Day Field, and are the first West Orange travel team to do so. These players have been together for the last 11 seasons since they were nine and 10 years old, and will enter the fall together for their 12th season. They have a respect for the game of baseball as well as their coaches. Their presence goes far beyond the playing field. This group of boys volunteers their time at the PAL to help with the special needs game, mentors and coaches the young travel teams, helps out at the PAL free winter clinics, volunteers to help build the batting cages at the PAL, and assisted the West Orange Elks with placing flags on the graves of our veterans during Memorial Day. They attend the games of their peer teams, cheering them on and showing support. Monville and New Providence have recognized the team as one of the most respectful and professional teams in their leagues. They have big hearts, infectious smiles, and their actions are to be commended both on and off the field. Let's give these young athletes a round of applause. Nice job. You gentlemen have had a very busy summer. The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize and congratulate the team on their excellent sportsmanship and wishes them continued success in the future. I'm now going to call on Committee Chair Tony Castellino, who I happen to be related to, my husband.
That's the connection.
To recognize our coaches and to bring up our young athletes. Mr. Castellino.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Well, that sounds weird. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Tony Castellino. I'm a member of the PAL Board, and as Councilwoman Castellino said, you know, travel baseball is something new for us. We've been in the baseball business for over 50 years, representing the youth of West Orange, and through conversations with the mayor, the Rec. Department, MTL, we all came together and decided that it was best to have one in-house league and one travel league in town, as opposed to three leagues that we used to run. In working with the Rec. Department and Edwin Johnson, we've picked up on the travel program. We're now in our second year, going into our sixth season. As the Councilwoman said, this young group is in their 11th season together. Travel baseball running spring, summer, and fall, they've played together for quite some time. And, you know, we picked up a program from the Rec., which was developed, and we've only begun to try and improve on that. And this group is a testament to the hard work of many in volunteers, coaches, the commitment of parents, as well as the commitment of the players to the program. In just two years now, this team has been a runner-up and a championship team in the short life of West Orange PAL travel baseball. But the program is growing, as we see in our fall numbers, and again, that's a testament to everybody's commitment to baseball. Baseball is a very committed sport, takes a lot of time and effort in practice, preparation, and game time. And two people in particular I'd like to mention, who have worked tirelessly to bring this program to where it is today, and I know are going to do great things going forward. It takes a lot to put a baseball program together, three seasons a year, with field time, game times, schedules, working around other sports, when baseball season is not just a single season anymore. And I'd like to recognize Rob Coste and Cheryl Merklinger for their continued hard work. I saw a lot of heads nodding back there with the parents. They know what Rob and Cheryl do, day in and day out, to make the baseball program a success, and the PAL can't thank them enough for what they do. So, with that, Rob not only sets up the schedule, rakes the field, puts up batting cages, runs the program, he also coaches this group of young men. I'd like to bring up Rob Coste.
Before I start, I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor, thank you to the town council to give us this great opportunity, along with Tony Castellino and the PAL organization, for supporting us and being able to put this together. You know, I'm very fortunate enough to deal with these great guys, and without these guys, the real tribute goes to the people that are sitting behind them, the parents. They give a lot of time and dedication to getting the kids to practice four days a week, to get them better, and, you know, I can't thank for a better set of parents supporting me through what we do on a daily basis. So, parents, a special thank you to you. As for the players, before I do call them, I do apologize. They do deserve a lot of credit for putting in a lot of time and effort. One of the things, talking about this team, they're a bunch of field rats. We schedule practice for about two hours, and four hours later, they're still on the field practicing. So, it's a tribute to them, to the love of the game, of being there, wanting to get better, and improving themselves, not only as baseball players, but also as individuals. I also like to take the time to thank Edwin Johnson, as my assistant coach, for being there every step of the way. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your award. Ty Kelly. Noah Stenich. Chance Grishulo. Adam Ashby. Christian Pena Jr. Angel Merklinger. Jalen Fulton. And Matt Bovey. My assistant coach, Edwin Johnson. The parents and all the volunteers, Edwin, and everyone else involved with the program.
It's really great to see some championships coming home. It's, that's really cool that you guys got to play in Cooperstown. That's, what an experience that must have been. It's a lot of history up there. Thank you again, guys. And speaking of baseball, Mayor, I don't know, maybe you could talk a little bit about the Old Timers event going on on Saturday? No, just because I know you've been involved in-
Just saying.
No, I'm trying to save myself here. No, it's funny, it's the 40th Annual Old Timers Day, and we talked about the baseball program starting 50 years ago, so I guess we waited 10 years until the Old Timers initiatives got started. But, yeah, it's a special, it's a special ceremony, and Colgate Field on Saturday, 12 o'clock?
Yes, Council President, it's hard to believe, but yes, I am an Old Timer.
You all are.
I've played in the game the last couple of years. The game itself is more or less just for fun. We played two innings, a very slow, uncompetitive baseball. But it, more importantly, it honors and recognizes people who grew up in the neighborhood, grew up as part of the Colgate family. Much, much of us might remember, when we were young, a lot of the parks were the center of not only our lives, but it was the center of summer recreation in town. Each park had their own programs, they had camp counselors. Mr. Sayers would tell you that the Valley had the best teams, but I would tell him that Colgate had the best teams. So, Old Timers Day was started, as you mentioned, many years ago, to recognize the people who were influential to the kids like myself, growing up in Colgate. So, Mr. O'Connor has been a part of the Colgate Old Timers Day Committee since its inception. People like the Vogel family, and so many other important local families have made this an event, an annual and an important event, run by our Rec. Program, and it is this Saturday. And just to show, we're all getting old quick, a lot of the honorees this year are actually our age, so the honorees are getting younger or we're getting older. But it's a great event, it's always a lot of fun, and the game is a lot of fun, and the game is open to anyone who wants to play. So, if people want to come and enjoy the ceremony, recognize a lot of people who've been important to our community, and then play a couple innings of baseball, it's a lot of fun.
So, let's invite everyone in the audience to come out. Colgate Field, 12 o'clock, is it, Mayor?
Yes.
12 o'clock, Colgate Field, it's going to be a good time. Anyone involved with baseball in town, and, you know, for some of us that didn't grow up in town, Mayor, the mayor was, he started in the Great Iron, he was a running back, and he talked about being on the baseball team, so, you know, I know how much you appreciate sports, and I know how much the neighborhood means to you, so I figured that this would be a good segue to announce what's going on on Saturday, and invite everyone in the audience to come out. So, thank you for that. And we'll see you all on Saturday. With that said, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Madam Clerk, we have discussion, appointment of joint meeting representative. Sure. The joint meeting is a separate authority under which, is actually made up of municipalities that came together to form a, an agency to take care of wastewater and sewage treatment. It's made up of 11 municipalities, and each municipality appoints a representative from their governing body. And unfortunately, I cannot continue on the board, because of professional commitments, it's really difficult to make those meetings, and, as a result, I've submitted a letter of resignation, and now we're willing to take on nominations to fill that term and serve on that body.
Okay. So, do I have a nomination? Is there anyone that wishes to serve?
I would like to nominate Councilman Guarino.
Okay.
Do you want to be nominated?
Yes.
Second? So, is a fair question.
Is there any other nominations? Okay, I'll take a vote. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Guarino.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, and we have an update on the Edison redevelopment project by the Historic Preservation Commission. We have here with us Gerald Gerlin and Marty Fylowitz to talk a little bit about, from the Historic Preservation Committee perspective, a little bit about what's going on at the redevelopment area.
Chairman Brian Feeney.
Chairman's here?
Brian Feeney.
Okay. Chairman Brian Feeney.
If I could, Council President.
Yes, please.
Mr. Fylowitz has picked up a pretty nasty bug. I don't know whether it's a cold or flu nature, but he's, there was great uncertainty whether he'd be able to make it tonight, so I really appreciate him coming here. I'm just hoping that, to minimize the number of words, the number of words he has to say tonight, I thought it was really important for him to be here to speak, but just to keep in mind, he's, he's here a little bit under the weather.
How could you tell? I'm Marty Fylowitz. I keep forgetting to introduce who I am. I live at 17 Bradford Avenue in West Orange, New Jersey, and I'm an architect, an urban planner, and historic preservationist, in that order. I just got back from this cruise, so I'm not quite together on what has to be shared with you today, but what I do want to say is that what we are going to present, both Jerry and myself, in discussion today, is the observations that we made as the Design Review Subcommittee. So, this is not a report, per se, from the entire Historic Preservation Commission, but it's the work that Brian, Jerry, and myself have put in over the last month. In fact, it's almost exactly a month ago that we got a call from Prism to come down to the site and take a look at some samples, color samples specifically, that they wanted to run by us. Now, they're required to do that. It's not that they did it because they felt like doing it, but they are required to have us review all materials, all colors, and we were there. We went there, they showed us the window shop drawings, and you'd notice, if you go by, there are no windows on the building now. So, the old windows are gone, they have new windows, and they showed us the drawings. I believe we concurred that they were similar to the drawings that were shown us earlier on in the process, and that was a matter of picking the color for the framing around the windows. And this is an important aspect of it, because the earliest studies done show that the windows were painted in a green color, a very specific green color. So, we went and looked and spent some time, and we came up with a color that was acceptable, and they have that, we approved it, signed off on it, and they can go forward with that order. The other color, and it's very, really, really important to the final appearance of the project, is what color to paint the concrete frame that is left remaining after the windows have been removed. It's a very unique color. After concrete, usually if it's just a regular mix of Portland cement and stone aggregate, it'll come up in a grayish color. Sometimes you can put additives into it, and you can whiten it, and it comes up looking like Jerry's hair, mine too, for that matter. And jacked. It comes up, you can get a white color. You could put various additives in it. When Tom Edison built this building, there was no such thing as additives. You went with whatever your aggregate and mix, concrete mix, Portland cement mix would be, and it came up a very strange color. It's really, much of the aggregate is from sandstone, from this area. Now, sandstone, when you crush it down to small pieces, it comes up a brownish-red color. So, that got put into the mix. For some reason, black aggregate is in the mix as well, and you've got these sort of nuances of color in the concrete. When you stand back and look at it, it comes up looking almost like a salmon color with almost a purplish overtone. It's the best I can describe it. They showed us two colors that they had picked out, and they painted a half of a bay with, showing us those two colors. The three of us sort of rejected those two choices. We said that neither one really does it, we have to see more. So, we picked out two colors on the spot from the folder. They went ahead, and that very day, they painted two more sections for us to look at. By the way, what you see there now is, on the, on the front portion, or what's visible from Main Street, looking on the south facade, is a two-tone gray tone first, that's put down to sort of seal over the cracks and chips and discolored areas, because they had to patch a very, very significant amount of it. And then they put a white coat over that, so you will see gray and white. Those are not the finished colors. Those are two underling. So, we picked two more colors, they didn't do it for us. We asked them for two more, and they put them up. They've been very cooperative and working with us. Finally, just the day before I went off on this cruise, we picked four more colors, and I said to Jerry and Brian, "You guys pick it, I'm gone." And I don't know, did you pick it?
Yes.
Good. All right. So, we, we're that far into it, and as I say, we formed this Subcommittee. Full Commission hasn't heard of this yet, but they will at our next meeting. We want to expedite this process and try to make sure everybody stays on schedule. Another issue then came up, though. My two friends left me there alone, and I sat down and had a discussion with about six guys from Prism. And it had to do with the facade of the building along Main Street. That's the R and over R building, the residential over retail. That stretch of Main Street is about 400 feet, give or take, long, and it's what you're going to see when you drive up and down Main Street, as much as anything, and it's all new construction. However, it's on a historic site, the entire site is historic. The buildings had to be designed to be contextual to the existing historic structures. So, we took a look at the plans that had been submitted for building permit here, and that's what they were working from. And I noticed that they didn't look at all like the drawings that we, as an HPC, received in February of 2015, when it was submitted to us, some two years after the planning board approved it. Those of you who were present at that hearing may have remembered, I made a big to-do about the fact that it took two years between the planning board and the Stark Preservation Commission getting a chance to review it, completely the reverse of what it should be. I'm going to try to speed this up by saying, I was unhappy that the drawings that we saw to issue our certificate of appropriateness were not being used in the drawings that were submitted for a permit, which is what is being built from. And I called them on it, and we had a long discussion, and I told them, "I will not, under any circumstances," and I said, "I'm speaking on behalf of the whole Commission." I said, "If we saw this drawing of this facade at the time you applied for certificate appropriateness, we would not have granted it. I would not allow field stone like that which is used at the Turtle Bag Zoo to be applied all over the facade of this building, in areas that were shown to have cast stone, a flat, smooth, rectangular stone." Couple other things I pointed out, I will not belabor it. They said they would look into it, get back to the architect, and when they had this whole thing resolved, they'd get back to us. I haven't heard of them getting back to us. Brian shakes his head, "Jerry, you haven't heard." So, we're waiting for that. It's, it's critical that they stay with the drawing, with the picture, in effect, the renderings that were shown to us when they applied for certificate of appropriateness. Otherwise, it makes a mockery of the system. Okay, got that off my chest. I wish I could get the cold off my chest. I also, I'm trying to just pick up on everything. Jerry is much more organized, he has, he'll pass it out, he's written it up, and you'll read it. But there was some discussion, some, of a quarterly report that Prism was supposed to issue to the council. And I don't know where that's at, but I remember saying that it's not, it's really next to useless. To get a report every quarter means that, should you find something that you don't like in that report, they're already three months down the road. So, I urge that there be some change to the way, let's face it, folks, this is the biggest project ever done in the township of West Orange. Never before has anything, other than Edison's original buildings, never before has there been a project of this magnitude, and to not have every, meetings every two weeks, which are called job meetings or- project ever done in the township of West Orange. Never before has anything, other than Edison's original buildings, never before has there been a project of this magnitude. And to not have every, meetings every two weeks, which are called job meetings, or project meetings, or progress meetings, whatever you want to call them, you should be requiring that there be a meeting every two weeks, and that there be a town representative at those meetings, that minutes be taken, those minutes should be distributed, any changes or modifications or questions should be asked then and there, not three months later. Otherwise, this is not going to turn out the way we all hope it will. So that's my suggestion for tonight, and I hope you'll give it serious consideration, and Jerry can give you much more. So go ahead, Jerry. By the way, I will stay here if you have any questions.
Marty, watch this. I'm going to read what I prepared, and at the conclusion of my remarks, I will distribute this to the councilmen. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the Town Administration, members of the public, your honor, Mr. Mayor, although I believe I'm familiar to all, I am Gerald Gerland, the Commissioner of the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission and the West Orange Planning Board. I am an architect, I live at 296 Aronel Drive, West Orange, New Jersey. The issues concerning the Edison Battery Building come with good news and bad news. First, the good. And by the way, some of my remarks will echo many of the remarks that Marty just made, so please bear with me. I am the Chair, I am the Chair of the HPC, Brian Feeny, and the Vice Chair, Martin Fidowitz, and Eugene Diaz, the Principal of PRISM. And members of the staff have met recently and periodically, primarily concerned with the green paint color for the new metal window frames, as well as the color of the material that will cover the exterior exposed concrete surfaces. We have agreed on the green paint color. In addition, and to that end, PRISM had prepared various large-size paint samples for the HPC to consider. We could not agree and proposed additional colors as provided by the Secret Corporation, whose material will be used to cover the concrete. We have tentatively selected a color and awaiting PRISM's acknowledgement. We have observed the construction of the formwork and pouring of concrete for the foundations and lower walls of the garage. Now, the bad. We have suggested that at least one existing concrete column be left exposed, so that there is a record of what the original concrete looked like. This has not met with PRISM's enthusiasm, but they have said that they will look at this. The most disturbing issue is the fact, and Marty has talked a lot about this, that the construction for part of this project is proceeding and containing changes to the design of the Main Street facade, which are not part of the design for same that the HPC has previously approved, and which form the basis for the issuance of the Certificate of Appropriateness. In this regard, we, the HPC, find the township to be particularly remiss in following the guidelines with the progress of this project, but in fact, the guidelines provided by the U.S. Government of the Department of the Interior, which the HPC has followed and expects all who are involved with this project to similarly follow. Why and or how this has happened has no explanation, other to suggest that perhaps the township may not be aware of the requirements, or that there has been a deliberate effort to skip some procedures in order to make sure that the construction schedule is met. And by the way, the HPA C has no knowledge of this schedule, no knowledge of the requirements that PRISM include, the HPC, in progress meetings, and/or any other information that is pertinent. The HPC will be meeting tomorrow evening to consider this issue, and there is some concern that the plug be pulled and formally deny PRISM from continuing construction on this part of the project. At least a circumstance which the HPC believes comes with the peril of delays and subsequent financial and legal issues. To PRISM's credit, they have noted that they will review our concerns and respond, which they have not yet done. So the HPC looks to the Council to advise as what they believe their appropriate action under these circumstances will be, if, and if so, when. Respectfully. Mr. President, I have a request.
Yes, sir.
I know this may be out of order, but we have another project of great concern here in West Orange, and that is the fate of St. Mark's. So I have prepared some short remarks about St. Mark's, and I would ask your indulgence to let me, permit me to...
Mr. Gerland, let's hold off during a public comment, and I'll give you the floor early during public comment, just so that we can finish our conference meeting agenda and begin the meeting, because we have a lot of attendees here today.
One more. Thank you.
Thank you all for your presentation and for the work that you're doing in making sure that historic character is maintained in the area, and I'm sure that the Administration's going to reach out to you and work with you on making sure that, you know, whatever was agreed upon with regards to the certificates of appropriateness are being followed, and any other permit approvals that have been extended.
Council President, could I just ask a question or two, just to follow, just to clarify?
Two?
To the two gentlemen that just came up and spoke.
Sure.
Okay, great. If you could just maybe decide, once I ask the questions, who should come back? I just wanted to try to clarify your concern that there may be construction going forward that does not comply with what you saw and approved for the Certificate of Appropriateness. Has it gotten to the point essentially of no return? Has there been, has there been construction done that does not fit the Certificate of Appropriateness at this point?
Yes, I know. Any thought of Main Street yet?
Could you just please just come back to the, if you would mind, to the...
No, they have not started something and taken it to a point of no return.
In fact, that's why we wanted to emphasize at the meeting that was held last month with them, that what they have gotten a permit for is unacceptable because it's not the drawing, and there's plenty of time to change it. And it's not huge changes. I mean, it's not structural changes, it's not HVAC changes, it's simple facade materials.
Thank you, Mr. Fidowitz.
So it's, there's plenty of time to rectify that.
Just another quick question. The meeting that you had about a month ago, was there anybody from the Township Administration that attended that meeting?
I do not think so. Then again, it was a request that was put into Brian as our Chairman, that we come and see their materials and colors. And I don't think that was an invitation, that was extended beyond the HPC.
Brian Feeny, Chair of the Stark Preservation Commission, 27 Woods End Road. We did invite Acting Planing Director Paul Greigle to that meeting, but he was not available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman?
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you have one second.
Thank you, Council President. Just for clarification, the Administration is meeting with PRISM and their representatives on a regular basis. We were not at that meeting, but we are aware of their concerns. We were made aware of their concerns on this particular aspect of the project last week, and the Administration is looking into it. As Mr. Gerland and Mr. Fidowitz mentioned, the project didn't start, they have to build the deck before they even construct the building that they're concerned about. So this is not happening tomorrow, it's not happening even in next month. So we are aware of the concerns they have, and we are working with PRISM to rectify it and make sure everyone's on the same page before that aspect of the project would commence.
Terrific, yeah, and I think that that was seconded, that none of the work has gotten far enough where it would be in violation of the original Certificate of Appropriateness. Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council President. I was really going to say the same thing when Councilman Krikovjak asked that question, that you, I was thrilled to go on the tour of the site, and I'm glad that you see how cooperative that they are being, because I was there when they were looking at all the paint and putting the paint on the building, and met your colleague, Phyllis, there also on tour of that site. And as the mayor says, they are not building the retail space until the parking deck is constructed and installed, and so we have plenty of time to address these issues. And I wholeheartedly agree with you, because it is a national historically designated site, so not to arbitrarily change plans. I do agree with you. And that you, I would like to ask, though, you are having your meeting tomorrow night, if there are any questions that do come up, as you already know that the business administrator, I'm pleased to go back on a tour to take minutes again from everything that I posted and shared with you. If you do have any questions, please share them so that everything can be addressed in a timely manner. Thank you.
Marty, I hope you feel better.
Go home.
Yeah, it's tough. I just went through that last week. And thank you again for your commitment to the cause. We're going to move on to council liaison announcements. Who would like to start? Councilwoman?
So next month, the Friends of the Library will be hosting our book sale on October 1st and October 2nd down at the West Orange Public Library. They're still accepting donations, so if you have any new and unused books to bring them down, any other taken updated SAT books, any other kind of learning, updated learning materials for students, but not textbooks. So you could just drop them off at any given time, so, and they're going to get a notice out, because, I'm not sure, Councilman, if my colleague here, who also sits on the committee with us, I received an email today that there was, someone stated that book sale wasn't happening, but it is, so they'll get more flyers out on Facebook and other venues. They're working on that now. Also, I'd like to thank the residents and the community at Gregory School. It was a long summer and a long project that actually went into effect today with the new bus loop and the kiss-and-go lane for the parents. I understand Mayor Parisi was on site this morning.
Went flawless.
And Superintendent Retzke was in the kiss-and-go lane, making sure it moved along.
And sufficient police officers as well.
Yes, so, you know, we thank everyone, and especially to Mr. Lepore. It was a very, it was a very busy summer for Mr. Lepore, Mr. Williams of Public Works, between the Gregory School project and also at Redwood School, we had a big project in the neighborhood with hopefully improving the flow of traffic and make it safer for our students and our residents. So kudos to them for keeping the lines of communication open. Landscaping still has to be completed at the project site. I mentioned at last meeting, it is still hot, it still feels like August, even though it's now September, so the landscaping will be in place and hopefully within the month or so. Also, lighting, there was not an issue with the lighting. Some folks thought there was an issue with parking lot lighting, it was just that Mr. Lepore was being proactive and being cost-minded, so he had changed the lighting from the original plan to make it more cost-effective and put into the budget of the project. So that will all be taken care of in the next few weeks. If the lighting isn't in place by the time it's a back-to-school night or a meeting at the school, he had already made arrangements for a light tower to come in, but just so you know, there's still lighting on the school building itself, just the lighting that was another pole in the parking lot that was moved. So again, thank you to Mr. Lepore and to all the neighborhood concerned for putting up with the project, and hopefully the kiss-and-go lane will continue to work flawlessly. I was happy that the hurricane did not hit today, and we did not have rain for the opening of school. That would have made things a little more stressful, but all went well. Mayor, or Councilman, you mentioned Old Timers' Day, looking forward to that. I have to say, some of my former classmates are getting honored, so, you know, I'll put in that category, which is nice, and that's about it. Just want to make a general statement, from here on in, every weekend, there's plenty to do here in West Orange. A lot of the school, the communities, all of the school communities are having fundraisers on the weekends. You get your car wash every weekend up at the high school. There's also a lot of different barbecues and picnics, so look on different websites, and if you're bored on the weekends, there's plenty to do here in the township, so fall will be festive.
Excellent. Thank you for that report. Councilman Krikovjak?
Yes, thank you. I've also been trying to pay attention to the Gregory School project in there. I think there's still some things that have to be done. I think there's a flagpole, and I'm not sure all the signs got in, so there'll probably still be some work going on.
Can I comment to that?
Oh, please.
I apologize, you forgot. Yeah, Mr. Lepore told me that there was a few signs that still may have to go in. He wanted to observe the traffic flow these next few days before he added and finalized the signage, because he just wanted to see how everything was flowing. So, which makes sense, because he may make adjustments on some of the signs he wanted to install. So everything will be done and completed. Hope that answered your question.
Thank you. And my liaison report for the Historic Preservation Commission just spoke for me, much better than I could, so I'll also bring the results of the meeting tomorrow night. Just also wanted to encourage everyone to come to the Hazel Avenue School Fall Picnic, which is September 17th. I'm going to be one of the targets in the dunk tank, and anybody who wants to try to get me wet, I'm scheduled for 1:50 in the afternoon, and I'm sure there's plenty of other people who are doing it as well. So it's a great cause, so hope to see you there.
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, it's a yearly event, and it's always well-attended, so make sure you all come at Hazel Avenue School, September 17th, it's around 1 o'clock or so, right, bell time? Are you going into dunk tank? I know you all do.
I chickened out.
You did?
I'll be throwing.
You can help in other ways. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Guarino?
Thank you, Council President. Okay, well, summer is winding down, and Thursdays in downtown on Main Street came to an official close. It was a very successful program. My congratulations to the Downtown Alliance, its members, Megan Brill, and of course, Kevin Cruz, our Vice Chairman, who's here. A lot of new friends came downtown, a lot of new friends discovered new places to eat, to shop, and to mingle, so very successful, should be even better next year. Also, on September 25th is the Mayor's Annual 5K Run for Ovarian Cancer. If you go to the website, I believe, Megan, can they still sign up? Can they still register?
I'll have to talk about it myself.
Okay, then I'll leave that, I'll leave that section for Megan to discuss. Also, this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at Lincoln Field in O'Connor Park is the 15th Annual Essex Full Soccer Tournament hosted by West Orange Mountaintop Soccer and Livingston Soccer. It's a great event, there's over 50 towns participating this year. It's a great time to bring the kids out to watch the games. Our future varsity teams will be playing, so it's a great time to come out. The Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board met last week, or two weeks ago. Good results from the county meeting, good results from the county meeting, and potential cooperation with the county to get a lot of the things accomplished that the entire board has been pushing and been talking about. So those things are moving. You'll be seeing new signs up on Pleasant Valley Way, speed signs in the school zones and the flashing signs, so, and the board will meet very shortly to put together our So, and the board will be meeting very shortly to put together our next presentation to the county. But since we've had our county meeting, the county is very, very cooperative and looking forward to working with the township and the Safety Advisory Board to make West Orange more safer and to incorporate our complete streets. So those are the things that have been going on. There's a lot to do. Come on downtown, go see the building, go see the development on Main Street, and see the difference between what it was six months ago and what it looks like now. A lot of people are talking about it, a lot of people are interested in the downtown environment, so I hope you all get down to look at it and see it to fruition. And thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Krokoviac, speaking of Pleasant Valley Way, and you started, you mentioned it, you were at the meeting, I saw a picture of you at the meeting. You want to say a little bit about what went on with the county? It wasn't the county, I thought it was the county representatives?
It was the regular, regular monthly meeting of the...
But county representatives came by? Okay.
I was at the county.
Can you report? Oh, you were at the county meeting. Okay, then you can report.
I'll let Councilwoman McCartney was able to cover, and thank you, Susan, for being there for me, I couldn't, couldn't make it. That meeting was held with select members, Ms. Roz Moskowitz-Belsky, Mr. Mike Danamiller, Councilwoman, Councilwoman McCartney, Len Lepore, Chris Jasek from the West Orange Traffic Bureau, and members of the county engineering department who were there, and are, we're now able to begin the communication, a lot of communication of what we need. And I'll let Councilwoman McCartney speak about that portion.
Basically, we're looking to lower the speed limits at Pleasant Valley Way, but the metric is so hard to, to be met. The original speed limit, now there's laws that make it very difficult to change those limits once they've been set, but the county is, is very willing to work, oh, Roz is here too, she can speak about that. Roz, and I see her county representative, speak a little bit more about the specifics. They're willing to work with us to try to meet those, to meet those requirements in order for us, in order to make it easy for us to lower the speed limits. But Councilwoman McCartney, yes?
Thank you, Council President. That pretty much was, the meeting was all about predominantly Pleasant Valley Way, but also Main Street, because we had Terry Jung from the Thomas Edison National Historic Site was also there. To pick up where you left off, part of what Lieutenant Jasek was talking about, if the speed does not justify, if, if the studies do not justify change in the speed, there is a, I'm having a meeting tomorrow with Millennium Strategies, our grant writer, about the New Jersey DOT grant to do beautification and possibly traffic calming at that intersection of Eagle Rock and Pleasant Valley Way. So that was also discussed at the meeting. County was very receptive. Pretty much all I can say was that the meeting went very well. There will be a, before they meet again, the county meets again, they want Lenny and the police officer, Jasek, to kind of finalize what it is they want to present to the county. This was more of a brainstorming session to look at traffic calming devices. And Mike Danamiller was there representing himself as a resident, but that is his background and his insight was, is very helpful.
Thank you, too.
All right, so a meeting with the grant writers tomorrow, Millennium is on the top, I mean, the New Jersey DOT grant is a topic of conversation, but it really is about the Sustainable Jersey application. We did submit that back in June, but they have reopened the portal so that now we can upload all the supporting documentation to justify everything that we submitted back in June. So that's due at midnight on September 11th, and the meeting is pretty much about that. That was my meeting with Millennium Strategies tomorrow. And I have to say, the police department has been so helpful, and the fire department, because so many of the points that we're accruing are coming out of the Office of Emergency Management, and so many programs that are already in place. A lot of environmental things also, I see Bob Nacco from the Environmental Commission here, quite a bit, of course, of the, from the Environmental Commission, and the Health Department. So Sustainable Jersey is a program that certifies a town. We're looking at, we're looking, hope to accrue enough points to get a silver level. Right now, we have a bronze. And things like the police prescription drop-off things help. The police have done so much digitizing their reports that allow us to get so many more points toward this. So we're going over our checklist tomorrow to see where we are with that. Speaking of the police, today there was a senior pool picnic, and the police were there, officers Wagner and squires were there to help volunteer their services with the picnic. And just want to thank Patty Duffy and Estrella Bianca, they controlled the weather, just like Emily, we used to thank, thank Emily Rafferty for doing that, and it seems like that's something they're carrying over. So, and all the other volunteers that helped. Music was excellent, it was a beautiful day. Tomorrow night is the West Orange Planning Board. On our agenda tomorrow, we have resolutions for the Turtleback Zoo, for the lion and hyena exhibit, and the Eagle Rock Commercial Area Resolution will be discussed. There is a present, there will be a presentation on the area, another different area in need of redevelopment, which is something we have been looking at, the matrix plan for Mitchell Street and Central Avenue and Valley Road, so that will be on for discussion tomorrow evening. And I would invite everyone to visit the West Orange Arts Council website, westorange.org. Look at, there's so much information on workshops and classes, their gift shop that's now opened, and their gallery space, 555 Valley Road. Also, we talked about Hazel Avenue and their annual festival. I'm not gonna be in the Dunk Tank this year, though I have been every year. That's also the day for the Jazz Festival up at Ospac on Boland Drive. On Sunday, September 18th, is the annual Nikhil Bedlanti Foundation 5K and Fund Run, 9 o'clock up at West Orange High School. We invite everyone to attend to support that cause. One more, sorry, sorry. Operation Hope, we have been getting outstanding press, and we're seeing more and more of this with Operation Hope is the heroin and opioid prevention effort, again with the police department and so many volunteers. Two mandatory classes are coming up for people that have signed up. One is the Saturday, 9:10 at 9:00 a.m., at the, and the other one is at 9:18, on 9:18. 9:00 a.m. at the Office of Emergency Management Training Facility, which is the First Aid Squad Building at 25 Mount Pleasant Avenue. And if you haven't signed up, please call Patty Duffy, 973-3254-105. Not too late to volunteer. Come to the training sessions on Saturday. Thank you.
So folks that have signed up need to attend both sessions?
Both sessions.
Or they're gonna attend either or? So you have to be the 17th and the 18th?
Yes, and then there are other dates that are coming up, if these don't...
Oh, you said the 16th and 18th.
9:10 and 9:18.
Oh, 9:10 and 18, okay, so, okay, back-to-back Saturdays.
At 9 o'clock, right.
Okay.
And then there are other dates that are available, if those dates, if you have a conflict with those dates.
Okay, great. Madam Clerk, that concludes the conference agenda.
Council President, can I just ask one quick question?
Yes.
I was hoping that Mr. Sayers was gonna get back. I know Mr. Gross is here, I just wanted to ask, PRISM is delinquent on the property at 55 Lakeside that was due August 1st, it's, they still, they owe about $120,000. DGP was delinquent for about four or five days, but they've also, they've paid for August. Is the town doing anything about 55 Lakeside, the, the delinquency? Because as I'm, point out, it's, it's an event of default under the redevelopment agreement?
There's, just kind of, my attention today, the situation, I don't have any more information for you, I'm gonna tell you the process to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
And here he is.
And here he is. Great timing, Mr. Sayers.
Great time.
I was just asking about the, the property tax delinquency that PRISM has at 55 Lakeside, and I was just wondering if the township was planning on doing anything to try to, to prompt them, or to pay, or to declare an event of default?
Actually, I talked to the tax clerk today, and he pulled some records out, I need to get them before the end of the day, so hopefully tomorrow I'll have them, and I'll be giving them.
Okay.
Part of the taxes are paid on August 1st.
Oh, so that, because the, the database doesn't show any payment for August 1st? You're saying they've made a partial payment on 55 Lakeside?
They've made a payment on, they've made a payment on...
Right, right. That was, that was only delinquent for about four or five days, but, but there haven't been, made any payment?
Actually, it wasn't late, they paid on August 1st.
Oh, okay, well...
According to what I saw, around 11:00.
The, the public database said they paid on the 15th, which...
Yeah, it was extended from the 10th to 15th, according to the tax.
Could, could you just send an email to the council, when you guys figure out what you might want to do at 55 Lakeside?
The date was extended because of the, the date of actual, we, we, having to give a certain period of time for taxpayers to respond, so it was extended because of the, the date we actually got the certified rate.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on October 14th, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building West Orange and filed in the office of the municipal clerk of the township of West Orange on October 14th, 2015. Councilwoman Castellino, present. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cibrello?
Present.
Mayor Parisi?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We're gonna start off with a public comment. We have members of the Downtown West Orange Alliance that would like to make a quick presentation.
Kevin Cruz for the Downtown Alliance, good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for giving us a couple of minutes to talk about what's happening on Main Street. I think if I were to write a speech today talking about the, the state of the downtown, I'd have to say that it's good and it's getting better. I think our operative word is momentum, we've got a lot of it. Some of that is due to, I think, nature just filling a vacuum, and a lot of it has to do with some of the efforts that the Alliance and, and other folks have put into creating some buzz, getting some enthusiasm, making things happen in the downtown corridor. I'm gonna pass this one sheet around to you. This is some information, there's some available to the public if they'd like to see it, if they haven't already seen it. Many of you have already taken a look at this. This was information that was compiled for our, our Commercial Realtors Open House, which we held in the early spring. And the reason we did that was because we wanted to introduce that group to, or reintroduce that group to West Orange. Many of them, even though they may do business here or have been around, had really kind of forgotten, or, or West Orange in particular, Main Street Corridor had fallen off their radar as a place to bring potential clients to, to look at a potential storefront or a commercial property. As a result of our efforts surrounding that project, we had a consultant, JGSC, in conjunction with Main Street New Jersey, which is part of the Division of Consumer Affairs, put together a list of potential companies to call and start to market West Orange on a very active basis. That sheet, along with this letter, if you'd like to take a quick look at that, which came from the mayor, went out to all of those businesses to soften up the market, and the commercial realtors now will hopefully call some of them and invite them to look at the real estate that is available. Many of these companies that they're on a national or regional basis have real estate people in-house who are responsible for going out and finding properties that might fit their particular need. Just a couple of, of interesting notes, I think, to let you know what is happening on Main Street. In the beginning of the year, in 2016, there were 41 vacancies. Today, we have 23. And one of the things that we have also concentrated on is to be sure that anyone who wants to identify a vacancy can do so in an easy fashion, so today you'll find all of those listed on the Downtown Alliance website. We have also been very active in talking to the brokers who are listing those properties, and letting them know that as they identify potential tenant for that property, to come and visit with us because of the, the help that we can provide them, not the least of which is grants for facades, and also opportunities to learn to run your business better. As I think most of you know, a lot of these businesses get started as a result of somebody having that entrepreneurial bug, and they want to start a business, and many times they may not be fully equipped to do that. So we're offering a lot of seminars, training, and other things that people can make available to help them get started in their business. There's actually one coming up, Megan, we'll have to give them the dates, but it's a store design and visual merchandising, keys to a thriving, successful business. And, you know, this is something that a lot of people may not really do well at. Maybe they're good at running the business, they, they may know the product, they may be good at the accounting, financial part of it, but merchandising the store or merchandising the window is something that, if you're not really good at it, you might have to learn it. This is a good chance for someone to participate in a seminar, at least to get some ideas and get moving. Some of the, some of the properties that have sold or are in the process of being filled, Petron Amusements is right around the corner here on Linsley, is going to be occupied by some well-known New York artist, not one that I would've thought of as, you know, potential tenant for that property, but that one is filled, and that's really kind of a unique business, I think, for the Main Street area. We just have found out that the Future Autobody location, which is actually five different stores in there, has been leased. We're still doing a little reconordering to find out exactly what's going in there, but that is really exciting. That is a prime property, right in the heart of the, the corridor. Autozone, if you've driven by there, you know that, that they are open. On the Harrison Avenue side, Folklore Artisanal Taco just opened. I went today for lunch and got a great burrito, so if you like tacos and burritos and Mexican or ethnic food, great place to stop. People who are there are very excited about being here, this is their first store. They drove around, literally drove around and saw a neighborhood and saw empty storefronts, and that's how they chose their place to do business. So they're very happy to, to be here. We have a very good authority that a high-end bakery is gonna open in what used to be the Wagon Wheel location. I'm not gonna say the name because I don't know it for a fact, but I've been in touch with that, that person, and trying to, to help her work her way through the, the building department and some of those, some of those issues. There's some unique characteristics about that location that we had to kind of, to get through. A question has come up continually about the CVS Plaza, which is located next to the Battery Factory. That is something that the developer is going to use as part of the broader redevelopment plan. They have advised us that some type of a grocery store or other kind of business will go in there, so we get, we're gonna ask that question quite a bit, what's going on in there. So they do have plans for that. What they are, we don't know, but perhaps you, you... What they are, we don't know, but perhaps you folks may be a little bit more involved, but that question does come up a lot. So for the benefit of people who are here and those who are watching TV land, that is part of a longer-range redevelopment strategy. So really, what we're looking to do as part of our behind-the-scenes efforts, you know, many of you were involved in the Downtown Thursdays and participated in that, have been very active in helping us on the promotion side of the Downtown Alliance, and we really appreciate your participation because it lends a lot of credibility to what we're trying to do. But behind the scenes, and a little bit more quietly, we have been very active in trying to develop relationships. You know, I always talk about the Downtown Alliance, the key word there is alliance. We're about relationships, and we're trying to strengthen those relationships with people like commercial realtors and folks who are interested in developing parts of the Main Street Corridor and working with them and, or having them advise us on different things that we can do as an organization. So that, along with the Design Committee, which is one of the four committees that makes up the Alliance, one being the Administrative Committee, which is the business side of the business, Promotions, which many of you, many of you are familiar with, and then the Economic Revitalization Committee, but we also have a Design Committee, which is working to go through those standards that apply to things like facades and lighting and what the, what the Main Street Corridor should look like. So expect those folks to come back to the council at some point for some advice, some direction, or maybe even some suggestions for changes to our ordinances on what really should constitute facades and colors and lighting and things like that. So again, there's a lot going on behind the scenes. We're very, as I said, we're very encouraged with what's happening, particularly in the last 30 to 60 days. I mean, it's amazing how momentum can just pick up, and man, it runs. And people are now starting to look at, at Main Street as a viable alternative to some of the other surrounding communities because you can get in on the ground floor and get your business established without as much capital outlay as if you were looking to go to one of the neighboring communities. So again, thank you very much for your continued support. We'll be back in November to talk about our budget, and we'll go into some detail about what it is that we're doing, you know, on a more detailed level. But for the folks who are in the audience here and those who are watching on television, there are things happening on Main Street. And aside from the Battery Factory, which we all know is, is important, is really the linchpin to the revitalization, but it's not the end-all, be-all. We have to, we have to stay focused on the rest of the corridor, and it is happening. Like I said, we've got a lot of momentum, and we're very encouraged with, with the pace of that momentum. So thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer otherwise. So I'll turn it over to our Executive Director.
You summed this up pretty well. Megan Brill, Executive Director with the Downtown Alliance. I'm here to talk about the Mayor's 5K Run. I think that when you, when you talk about the Alliance, we really divide ourselves into two areas, promoting and building the businesses that are already here and trying to recruit new businesses. So Kevin spoke a little bit about the new businesses that are coming, and, you know, it is really exciting. When I looked at those numbers and I added it up, I thought we were at about 30 vacancies. To have 23 vacancies is huge for us. I don't know if it's ever been lower than that. So it's a fluid number, comes and goes a little bit, but we are really excited, and we do have a lot of folks that are buying into our vision and moving with us. Tap covered a great article that really talks about development and things all over town, but the downtown piece was really well-written. I truly appreciate, you know, the coverage on that. Okay, so the Mayor's 5K Run. This is our 26th year with the 5K. It's the 10th year that we partnered with the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition, which they like to be called NOC. Some stats about ovarian cancer, September's ovarian cancer month, they call it the silent killer, and it, there's no test to detect it in the early stages. All women are at risk of ovarian cancer. One out of 75 will develop this disease in their lifetime. Ovarian cancer is the deadliest of all gynecological cancers. The American Cancer Society estimates 22,000 new cases of ovarian cancer this year and 14,240 deaths as a result of that. The pap smear doesn't detect ovarian cancer. So you get your pap smear every year, and you think you're all good to go, you're really not. The diagnosis, when treated, the diagnosis and treatment early, you have a greater than 90% chance of survival. Only 20% of the cases ever get diagnosed at 90, at 90%, which is just insane numbers. So early detection, understanding what the symptoms are is key, and I actually have these flyers that I would like to hand out. So one of the things that we wanted to do this year with celebrating the 10th year of partnering with NOC was turning the town teal. So you will see these ribbons that will be all over downtown and all over town, and we're turning the town teal. The mayor had to sign waft on a proposal with the Turn the Towns Teal people, and they're very specific about where the ribbons go, how they, how they look, how they're on not utility poles, light poles are fine, you know, different areas. So I need help in getting the ribbons all came in today. So we're going to divide the town up and then attack those particular corners. I also need help with getting the ribbons down. They're very specific about not letting these ribbons fly all over. One of the things that they talked about, you know, everybody, every disease has a ribbon, and every disease has a month. When they talk about the teal ribbon and why they like it, the, why they want it to flow longer and wider, is, it wraps you in caring and support, and that is something that, because this is such a devastating disease, that, that we, we need to bring awareness. So we're turning the town teal. We also have a, we're doing 10 silent auction prizes. This was a baseball bat, which I thought was neat that way. That got donated, handmade, it's a kid's bat, and one of the teams from the, that's running, we have 28 teams registered, it's Shake Your Teal Feathers, like tail feathers, teal feathers. So we're going to have that and lots of other teal stuff which will be popping up throughout town. We're on target to raise over $100,000. We have $46,000, so we're halfway, halfway there. The vast majority of numbers and registrators, runners, get registered in the month of September. We have about $20,000 in just sponsor money alone, and so that, that was just folks that, you know, encourage their company to, to donate money. You can still register online for $30, or you can register the day of the run for 35. I think that's it. It's really a very, you know, I went to the meeting, they have a chapter meeting once a month, and I went this past month, and I didn't know that three of the ladies were stage-four cancer survivors. So they found out it's stage-four, and they're still with us four years later. It's amazing. It truly is, you know, devastating disease, but I think that because it's such, there's no test, and that's what they really are fighting for and really raising money for. And we've raised as a township towards the NOCC over a million dollars so far. So it's a good, good dollars, good fundraising, good effort, but we don't do it alone. So sign up, you can contact Shari, the Mayor's Secretary's office, you can look on our website, email. We, anybody that wants to come and learn how to tie these hard bows, we're interested.
Terrific. Thank you for that report, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you, my daughter.
Any member of the public wish to address the town council at this time?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Jerry, I know you want to as well. Yes, come right up. No, you can come up to the podium, please, and just provide your name and address, and you have five minutes. Slowly and clearly, for the record.
Hello, my name is Asia Smith. I reside at 173 Watson Avenue, West Orange.
Yes.
I'm only here about the parking situation. I had made a comment on, like, a Facebook forum for West Orange residents. Where I live, parking is like terrible, it's practically nonexistent, and as a resident of West Orange for five years, tickets and, you know, for myself and my neighbors, we talk about it all the time, unfortunately, quite a number couldn't attend today. So I just came on behalf, and I want to know what will be done because it's, at this point, it's definitely an issue with the way, you know, of living.
Sure.
It's almost like a child, like, we have to hurry home at a certain time to make sure we have, you know, ample parking, you know, to be safe. Some nights, when I was in school, I would walk with pepper spray for safety because as a woman, I need to make sure I'm safe. When I first moved here, I had a newborn, so I had to park around the corner. I had my son in his car seat, I had groceries in my purse, and I'm walking all the way around the corner. And then once, you know, I just got frustrated, and I'm like, okay, I'm just going to park my car here, I would get tickets. And one time, at the time I didn't have a landline phone, and when the police came for the emergency snow removal, they towed my car right in front of my home, and I had to pay over $200 to get, because the police didn't even, you know, make an announcement on their megaphone, you know, to the residents of Watson Avenue, please remove your vehicle. So what can be done?
Sure. Can the administration answer that?
No. Back and forth.
I understand that, but, I mean, the mayor looks eager.
Can I?
Yeah, please.
I don't want to.
Oh, it's okay, this is a legit, serious issue.
Look, first of all, I was on the same thread on Facebook.
Okay.
We all live on Facebook these days. But look, we all, we all know the fact, the Heights, you can't print more land. The homes were built in the early 1900s, they were built very close together, many of them without garages. They were built at a time when not a lot of people had cars, so I'd love to say that we can snap our fingers and fix the parking problem in the Heights area. It's not realistic. So the only thing, and the administration is talking about that, to conduct a meeting because the only real solution is to make those streets alternating one ways. It's the only way to allow parking on both sides and allow cars to pass. Now, why we would conduct a meeting for that is because very often, that's not met with a lot of approval. We had the same discussion with residents at the Alphabet Streets in the Valley, who were also concerned about parking, and though they were concerned about parking, they overwhelmingly rejected the idea of alternating one ways. We had the same discussion with streets a couple blocks away from the Heights, the Cherry, Chestnut, Elm, Maple, Kirk streets as well, and they overwhelmingly rejected it. So some of our neighborhoods, unlike, not unlike a lot of neighborhoods all over the state, were built at a time before a lot of people had multiple cars, sometimes even before they had cars. So we can't just print more land. I'd love to say we're going to acquire a bunch of houses and knock them down for parking, and it's not realistic. So the only real option is to entertain whether or not the residents would entertain making those streets alternating one way, which would allow parking on both sides and still allow cars to trend, to transvert the street properly. So we're going to conduct that meeting. We haven't organized it yet. It's, as you can appreciate, there's a lot of houses in the Heights when you look at those streets, and many of them are multiple families, so we have to make sure that every resident is notified. So we'll try to conduct a meeting and do what we did in the Valley and in the Colgate area. We'll poll the neighborhood and see if they like it. Ultimately, and we'll discuss this with the neighborhood, it doesn't require an infrastructure improvement, so we don't, we can really do it on a trial basis for five months, six months. We really just have to change signs and communicate it. So it doesn't require any construction costs, but realistically, just so we're all clear, we just can't, we can't invent more land. So the only way we can do it is to take advantage of the land we have and maximize it as best as possible to keep traffic flowing, but allow for people to park on both sides.
Sure.
So following that discussion on Facebook, I committed that the administration would look at that, and we are. We have a staff meeting this Friday, and it's on the agenda for that, to at least schedule a meeting with the neighborhood and see ultimately if there's enough interest to at least do that on a trial basis.
Terrific. Yeah, so Ms. Smith, the administration's working on possible solutions, so it sounds like that threat was productive in trying to come up with some possible solutions on how to address the lack of parking in the neighborhood.
Well, with all due respect, it sounds, it sounds like that, that's like a potential long-off solution. What is available now? And when I had suggested, I said, for the residents, can we get even, like, parking permit stickers so that way, when the parking patrol comes in, they'll know that we are residents, we live there, there's no other means of parking.
Sure.
So where we live, where do we park?
Understood.
It's no one saying, you know, create, knock down these houses, that, that's, you know, unrealistic.
Council President, and I understand her concern. I grew up on a street that was very narrow, and we all fought for parking. The problem is, we just can't let people park illegal. It's illegal to park on both sides for a reason, because when there's cars parked on both sides of those streets, Little C, Watson High, and Watchon, they're too narrow, not only to allow safe passage of vehicles, but they become impossible to allow safe passage of emergency vehicles, mainly fire engines or ambulances, which are much bigger. So I'd love to be able to say we're just going to give residents a pass, but it doesn't really solve the problem, it just creates a bunch of other problems.
Parking regulations that are in place now were a solution a long time ago, and now it's a different situation, and I hope that you bring your recommendation of parking decals to the meeting, and hopefully some of the other, so you can have a healthy discussion in the part, and maybe that could be a possible solution, resident decals.
Oh, definitely. And I just want to know who is giving select towing permission to park? If it's illegal for residents to park where they live, then how come flatbed trucks get to park on a residential street?
If they're parking overnight, that's not legal. If they're parking during the day, that's perfectly legal, as long as they're parked legal, not blocking driveways or hydrants, but parking during the day is legal. If they are parked illegally, even during the day, blocking driveways, fire hydrants, or parked on the wrong side, then someone should call. But no one's getting a pass to park, but during the day, as we all know, sometimes parking in town ordinances are different during the day than they are in the overnight hours. So I don't know the specific street you're talking about where they're parking, but if they're parking illegally, that wasn't, they weren't granted permission, you should call the police desk or call the mayor's office, and we'll address them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Garland?
Thank you for permitting me to make this statement. I think you're all familiar with who I am. The issues concerning St. Mark's, like that of the Battery Building, come with good news and bad news. First, the good. Mr. Feeny, Mr. Fidowitz, Mr. Kukovia, and Tom Parisi met with members of the church congregation and its parent organization on Wednesday, July 14th. In attendance were new members of the new professional team, a new professional engineer, and new architect. We observed that just about all the debris from the fire that had landed on the church floor, the nave floor, had been removed, and that there was a construction crew building wood formwork and pouring concrete atop the existing stone exterior walls, whose purpose it will be to provide a stable base for the new roof beams that will ultimately be installed. new roof beams that will ultimately be installed. Now, the sides of the nave floor have been excavated for the purpose of providing for the installation of the beams that will be used to shore up the interior surfaces of the exterior stone walls. Cables have been installed that are anchored at the exterior and interior in the front stone walls, and it remains to be seen how windy annual inclement weather will affect not only the structural stability of these remaining exterior stone walls, which may include high winds, but the constant change in freezing temperatures and the resultant pattern of frozen water that expands and the thaw that may follow. Tom Tracy, the West Orange Building and Construction Code Enforcement Officer, is to be commended for his efforts in monitoring the progress of this work and ensuring that whatever destruction processes may take place are and are within the requirements of the West Orange Building Code. The members of the congregation and their parent group all have seemed to be eager to ask for the HPC to advise and to review and to make recommendations. The HPC is offered to be at their beck and call to provide whatever assistance it can and in a timely manner. The bad news, the congregation and its parents have been consistently minimal with information about their finances. The proposed shoring drawings, and I forgot my copy, the proposed shoring drawings that were provided were so preliminary and without details that it was and is impossible to make any judgments about them. Now, the downtown alliance has embarked on a program that will eventually and hopefully provide the environment for the successful and financially profitable environment for the township and Main Street. But for all of the funds being made available for this venture, whether from taxes, bonds, grants, donations, or otherwise, the fact remains that those who benefit directly will be private enterprise. Now, we have all been reminded that the church is a private institution. However, if it is the purview of West Orange to assist private enterprise, then why has the church been left out of this consideration? Acknowledging that the fina, excuse me, acknowledging that the financial rewards, the saving of this church, may obviously not be as real as the work of the DA, this church remains a historic landmark with very few other such structures in the United States to match its significance and its continued presence in West Orange, that requires a commitment that seems to be lacking from West Orange, and to that end, I believe West Orange has also been remiss in not lending even some assistance in some way to this effort. Exactly what assistance can and should be is another matter. Doing nothing and issuing public words of support and encouragement are not enough. And like the public words formerly spoken by the New Jersey AIA and some architects who have made a reputation of addressing such issues, there has been nothing to date for these entities to back up their respective words with these. So, please do something. If nothing else, use your considerable talents to invent some process to provide not only interest and even encouragement, but real assistance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garland. Any other member of the public wish to address the town council at this time? Yes, the gentleman over here, he raised his hand prior, with the pink shirt. I think it's pink. Mr. Cubey, you would be next.
Yeah.
How are you? Thank you.
Pleasantale, West Orange. I like to talk about the traffic. Like, Pleasantale, they don't give you a chance to cross the streets, and it comes, like, speeding, and, and the parking lot by Mark and Julie's is very bad, and we need more cops up there, and that. And then, like, for the Jewish holidays, we're going to need some, like, a cop by the Jabba Shaw in West Orange for the holidays, and, and there's no parking up there, up by Mark and Julie's, and the guard rail, and the guard rail is, like, far apart by the streets, by, by Mark and Julie's, and, and there's no parking up there.
I was okay if I just kind of dovetail that?
Yes, please.
Okay, hi. Roz Moskowitz, Belzke Elevenwood Drive. I have a statement I'd like to read from Rabbi Altman, because he's never able to come to the town council meetings because he works in the New York City. He leaves late in the afternoon. As a matter of fact, he takes the 71 bus and goes into New York, makes a connection. But this is a, this is a statement from Rabbi Altman, who's a resident of Conforti Avenue. He allowed me to read the statement, and I'll give this, this to you. "As a resident of West Orange for several years and a daily bus passenger and walker, I can tell you it is extremely difficult and unsafe to be a pedestrian in the Pleasantale area. As a transit user, there are many bus stops without protective bus shelters, and it is often difficult to stand for long periods of time, and especially taxing to do so with either the blazing sun beating down or during a heavy rain. The number 71 bus stop on Igorock Avenue is not well-lit, often crowded and unsafe, as riders run in the middle of the street in an attempt to catch the bus. Pedestrian crossings are needed in areas where people actually cross. I urge West Orange to work closely with New Jersey Transit to make bus ridership safer. As a rabbi who offers Sabbath services to the Jewish Community Housing Corporation, I can tell you that the walk from Pleasantale to 750 Northfield Avenue is a harrowing one. When I finally make it to just south of the Armory near Tennech Road, the sidewalk simply ends. I am then forced to walk in the grassed earth path unless I cross Pleasant Valley Way in the middle of the street with oncoming 50 mile-per-hour vehiculars posted speed limits. The sidewalk continues on the eastern side of Pleasant Valley Way. It's great that the county created a pedestrian crossing from the island to McLunes, but there is no crossing at all to proceed west on Northfield Avenue to the JCC and Viscaia area. There are absolutely no sidewalks or lighting west on Northfield Avenue, and I am either forced into the street, or I have to fight with the overgrown bushes and weeds that preclude me to walk safely to my congregation. Bicycle ridership is very popular along Pleasant Valley Way, and I see riders forced out into the roadway due to overgrown bushes by the fence along Essex County Brendan Byrne Golf Course. With seven senior citizen facilities along the Pleasant Valley Way corridor, I strongly support all efforts for aging in place and making our streets accommodating for all users. I urge the town council to work more diligently with the county to connect the sidewalks that join us as a healthy and safe community here in West Orange." Thank you. Here's a copy of his statement. I just want to make a comment as Roz Moskowitz-Belsky about that county meeting.
Yes.
You know, our councilman, Jerry Garino, has, right, Jerry, you, you said you were going to contact the other towns that have the 25 mile-an-hour limit in the business district, and to see how they got that lowered.
Yes.
So, that, that's Glen Ridge, that's Montclair, that's Verona, that's the Coldwells.
Right, arranging, if I may, Council President? Yeah, please. Roz, to get back to you about, I have arranged, and we're going to arrange meetings with them, so it's face-to-face, and there'll be a couple of our members going, so it's not just me there, but it's persons like you and Mike and everything who understand, and the right questions to ask.
Right.
So, they're being planned very shortly, and you'll be updated on the schedule.
Right now, I'm very encouraged by that, and I was encouraged by the county meeting, and, and it was good in that, that TAP grant. I just sent an email out about that. That's very important. I have spoken at the NJTPA meetings many times, so they've heard about Pleasant Valley Way, and it would be great if we can get that grant. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Cubey?
Hello. Dave Cubey, Director of the West Orange Public Library, and I'm just giving you an update on, summer reading program was concluded successfully. Summer does come to an end, and now our fall has begun. So, we have a lot of exciting things happening at the library. We have our Storytimes, we have Book Bingo Mondays, September 26th, October 24th, November 28th, at 6:30 p.m. for grades K to 3. Speaking of Stories Book Club, Tuesdays, September 13th, October 11th, November 8th, and December 13th at 4:30 p.m., grades 4 to 5. Yakity Yak Book Club, Tuesdays, September 20th, October 18th, November 15th, and December 20th at 4:30 p.m. Lego Club, Tuesdays from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. Downtime with Disney, Thursdays at 2:00 p.m. Terrific Toddlers, ages 2 to 3 and 1/2, October 11th and November 17th. Preschool Page Turners, ages 3 and 1/2 to 5, October's 11th to November 17th. Babies in Books, infants up to 24 months, October 13th to November 17th. Storytimes, grades K to 3, October 10th to November 14th, Mondays at 4:00 p.m. And Creature Comforts, that's Monday, September 12th, October 3rd, November 7th, December 5th at 4:00 p.m. That's where children practice reading to a trained therapy dog. For older kids, we've got the Steam Club coming up, ages 8 to 12, Tuesday, Tuesdays, September 27th, October 25th, November 22nd at 4:00 p.m. The Harry Potter Fan Club, Thursday, October 27th at 4:00 p.m., Friday, November 25th at 3:00 p.m., Wednesday, November 30th at 6:30 p.m. The Chess Club is starting out, Thursdays at 4:00 p.m., beginning this September 8th. Diary of a Wimpy Kid Double Down Book Release Party will be Wednesday, November 2nd, 4:00 p.m., ages 8 to 13th, with Wimpy Kid Trivia. Special programs coming up. Celebrate Hispanic cultures with a special bilingual Storytime program, Monday, September 26th at 4:00 p.m. International Games Day, Saturday, November 19th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Drop in and play a board game with family and friends. Star War Read Day, Saturday, October 15th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and of course, the library always participates in the mayor's fun run with the kids. We have coming up for the adults, Sunday, September 25th at 3:00 p.m., and this is done in conjunction with the Arts Council and Discover Jersey Arts. There will be a lecture and slideshow on Vermeer, who is one of the most significant painters of the Dutch Golden Age, with arts educator Janet Mandell illustrating the life of Vermeer through examination of some of his most important and iconic works. And Sunday, October 9th, that continues from 1:30 to 4:00 p.m. with a viewing of Girl with a Pearl Earring and this film adaptation of the book by Tracy Chevalier. We've got our, I already went through the Steam Club, Lego Club, Mayor's Fun Run, and that is that. We've got, so, a lot of active things coming up. Some of you may have noticed that we closed last week on Tuesday, and what we did was, we moved, it's called shifting, the entire collection, over 100,000 items were moved, large print were brought, brought to the forward. All the biographies are on the left side, all the numbered non-fiction stuff are on the right side now. We no longer have books in storage because we joined Buckles. We have over 6 million items in our catalog now, and this is now clearing the space. It will be the location for the Friends of the Public Libraries' first annual book sale, which you will not want to miss, and I encourage everyone to become a friend, because Friday, September 30th, there will be a wine and cheese gala event in the basement of the library, where you will be able to see what will hopefully become meeting and classroom space that will be available for classes such as for ESOL or for business meeting space and various things like that. But we're going to continue working to try to continue to improve service for the community, so, thank you.
Mr. Cubey, can you repeat that again, the September 30th date?
September 30th. That will, and also, the book sale continues October 1st and 2nd, but for, only if you are signed up to be a friend, so I encourage everyone to join the Friends.
Right.
There are many affordable levels, but please give generously up to the platinum lifetime member amount.
Terrific.
So...
So, that's the 30th?
That is.
So, encourage, encourage everyone to sign up to be a friend of the public library?
Yes. Oh, yeah, you don't need to, and, and in terms of your obligations as a friend, just signing up and becoming a member is, is friends enough. You don't have any obligations to go to meetings or anything like that, but we just appreciate the support, and it's a way for us to keep you in touch with goings-on, and if you support and believe in the public library and its role as the heart of the community, then please join us. We definitely would appreciate the company and the support.
Thank you, Mr. Cubey. Any other member of the, yes?
Excuse me. Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. First, I have some kudos for our fire department for their handling of the recent emergency at the Rentahouse. They did an outstanding job of being there, keeping the residents apprised of what was going on and updating as it went along. And also, to PSENG, repairing the electrical system, so that all the residents were able to sleep in their apartments and not have to relocate to cooling centers. I want to thank Mr. Keough, our rec director, for allowing the seniors to introduce programs at the pool specifically for us seniors, and also to the community police unit for the presentations they have been giving, and we had a great one at the pool the other day about scams and identity theft. The meeting on August 9th. Now, the confusion resulting from the fact that the Senior Citizens Advisory Board ordinance was not on that agenda revealed to the public that this body is clueless about the ordinance process. The assistant township attorney said he was surprised the ordinance wasn't on the agenda. Now, if the legal counsel was surprised, imagine how the citizen felt. It's a sad commentary about our township and the government, the body that controls the quality of life and destiny of all the citizens. My opinion relating to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board is that the entire debacle is the result of the mayor's opposition to the board. He made that known to me when he rejected the proposal to conduct a survey for the senior, of the senior citizens, asking what they would like the township to do so that they can age in place. And I want to clear up some confusion with Mr. Kizer, you might have had regarding Princeton. I held up the action plan for aging in place, and I think he got confused there, thinking it was their, actually, their board mission. They actually have two commissions, and they have a nonprofit and a township commission, and Montclair has the same thing, and one of them, the acronym is AIM for Aging in Montclair. As you, Mr. President, citizens did not have any suspicions about what took place until you raised some red flags and questions when you said there was no conspiracy to keep the ordinance off the agenda. I haven't sent any links to you, as you asked, because it's a very simple, very simple process. Google the official website of any township, every one of them in the state of New Jersey. Google the official website of any township, every one of them in the state of New Jersey, and it's all there. I would try to go on, I would go on to Mr. Assemblyman McKeon's 27th Legislative District. Every town has a senior board, committee, or commission except West Orange. Essex Falls is in with the West Essex Town, and Short Hills is in with Milburn. I think he could be embarrassed by that fact. Additionally, Councilwoman McCartney said she wondered whether a board is truly necessary. The Health Department does an excellent job. Well, every municipality in New Jersey has a health department as well as a senior board, commission, or committee. I don't think that needs any further explanation. Redundant? I don't think it's redundant. She said she hasn't heard any complaints from the seniors. Well, I have, and I guess, Mr. Mayor, you had it today. She said she hasn't heard any complaints? As I said, I have. And while they're telling me that, it's a waste of their time to complain to her or any other politician. Mr. Guarino said the council needs to make sure the ordinance does the right thing. I would like him to specifically explain what he means by the right thing. Maybe if this council was proactive, you would have had a long time ago extended the length of time the traffic lights stayed green so that's for the seniors to get across the street, and that gentleman, that's a good, great segue, without being run over like the senior woman who was recently killed on Main Harrison Avenues. At the senior picnic this afternoon, I heard a lot of complaints and disgust with how seniors are treated like second-class citizens in this town. I was very surprised when a group of women told me they go to East Orange to participate in their programs. Shame on West Orange. Up until now, I have felt nothing but frustration and exasperation. Now I only feel disgust. If ever we needed a Senior Citizens Advisory Board, it's now. Our seniors are definitely underserved. Thank you. And if the, Mr. Mayor, if you'll talk about the doctors that are all leaving 7:41 in Northfield, how we're going to handle that. I spoke to the county about it, and maybe, Jack, you and I have to meet again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morelli. Any other member of the public? Yes, ma'am?
Leanne Zalino, 589 Mount Pleasant Avenue. When we were here in August, there was some discussion about the Senior Citizen Advisory Board, and because we have brought it up repetitively, and no one seemed interested in drafting legislation, I met with Councilwoman Krokowiac, and we did that. We took the traffic advisory ordinance, they gave you a traffic advisory committee, and we fiddled it around and said, here, here's a Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. Somebody has to start somewhere, because no one was starting anywhere on your end, so we gave you something to tweak. The size of that board, yes, that's, that's me. That's where I'm coming from, because that needs to be an inclusive body and have as many people invited to participate as possible from every agency that works with seniors in town, whether it's municipal or other outside in the community. There are people with talents and resources that we haven't tapped. They should be invited to participate. Every council person should have the opportunity to appoint somebody that they want to be on that committee. And the mayor controls the bulk of the appointments. It's a win-win for everybody. And I can tell you from the picnic today, something seriously went wrong. The food was served cold, none of the condiments were on the table like they usually were. One woman, all by herself, was going around with a tong and a platter of tomatoes and cheese, doling out one piece of cheese and one tomato to anyone who wanted it on their already cold burger. I don't know what happened this year. I've never seen anything like that. It, I, it just, I don't know. And when they put the coffee out, they had no milk. I don't know what the heck happened this year, but something went wrong. And that's where, if you have an advisory committee, we can sit down, try and figure out what to do, come to you and say, maybe we can do this. I mean, it's just an advisory committee. It's not going to ask the town to do any work for them. We're the ones supposed to do the work. We're the ones that's supposed to go out and investigate grant money and come back to you and say, okay, give this to your grant writer. We heard that this is a good one. I've spoken to the director of the Senior Citizens in East Orange and answered to give me copies of grants that were successful, that she wrote. Cross out what you don't want me to know about. Why do we have to reinvent the wheel? Give me what works. If that language worked for somebody else, it should help us along. But that's what the thrust of putting that ordinance out there was, is to get this ball rolling, because it's not rolling. It's just sitting there gathering moss. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Zalino. We have a lady back there. The 14th is next Wednesday?
Yes.
So that correction is duly noted. The meeting is at 7 o'clock?
Yes.
7 o'clock next Wednesday, Historic Preservation Committee. We mentioned it twice, so I just want to make sure that that's, that's noted. Thank you, Jerry. Yes, ma'am?
Susan Lunchek, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. Often the best ideas for addressing challenges emerge from the bottom up, not from the top down. A Senior Citizen Advisory Board would be that grassroots entity. It would include representatives from various groups, each of which would have direct communication with large segments of the senior population in West Orange. It would provide an opportunity for an exchange of ideas to address the specific concerns and needs of West Orange seniors. It has the potential for real synergy from which creative solutions to problems may emerge. With no cost to the township, why would we not do this? I'd also like to offer some words of support and sympathy to Ms. Smith, who spoke earlier about the difficulties of parking in some areas of this town. When I lived for many years on Park Drive South and on, a little bit on Park Drive North, I often felt that I was a prisoner in my home, because I knew that if I left in the evening, in the evening, I would not be able to park when I came back. I probably would have wound up in, at the Junne Dunkle Pool or at Our Lady of the Lord's Church and have to carry a can of pepper spray to walk home from there. Now, I know, and I understand that this is not an easy problem to correct. I, I get that, I understand it, but I think we really have to try. But I, even though I don't live there anymore, I really do sympathize with the people in that neighborhood, because it was a real struggle. If it had not been for a kind neighbor who let me park in the townhomes across the street from my home, I would not have been able to park. I would have been able, I probably would have been driving around all night long. It was that bad. I don't know whether this is a possible, I know it's not a solution, but maybe a proposal where if somebody's a taxpaying homeowner, could they at least get a designated spot in front of their home for one car? I know that for multiple cars, they do it in, they do it down near Rutgers. I know that there are neighborhoods there because of all the students. I'm talking about Rutgers down in New Brunswick, that homes are designated, they at least do have one designated spot so that they have a place to put their cars. So, as I said, I know it's not a total solution, but at least it might help some people to not feel like they're prisoners in their homes or that they have to pay parking tickets all the time in their own neighborhood. So, again, I know it's hard, but we have to try to address this, because there are too many people in this town that are suffering from that situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the suggestions. Yes.
Good evening. Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I just wanted to speak on a few things that speakers had spoken about already. The issue of the parking, I just want to share with you that before I was married, I lived in Boston in a very congested area near Boston College, and we did have parking, resident parking decals. And while you didn't have a designated space, people in the neighborhood, you applied for it, and you got a decal, and the, the Boston Traffic Authority would periodically go by and ticket cars that didn't have decals. And that may be another solution. I appreciate the idea of the, the one-way street is a good idea, but of course, a lot of neighbors don't want that. But it, it was a workable solution for us in Boston, so I think there might be some other solutions to examine. The other thing I wanted to mention, too, was I appreciate Mr. Gerlin and all of the representatives from the Historic Preservation Commission for the work that they're doing on being watchdogs for us with Prism and especially for St. Mark's Church. I've spoken about St. Mark's before, and I feel it is a treasure of our town as well as nationally. And I, I would urge the township in any way that they can in terms of, now that we have a new grant writer, to look at opportunities for grants. I understand, you know, perhaps at the state level, but, you know, I know there's not a lot of money out there, but, but I agree that I think that we should be looking at ways to restore that building. And finally, I spoke last meeting about my support of the Senior Citizen Advisory Board, and I appreciate it being on the agenda this evening, and I, for all the reasons that have been mentioned earlier, I would urge all the council members to vote in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silvestri. Yes, Anthony? You yield the floor, okay? Come on. You can come up.
Mary.
Mary, you can come up. It's okay, he yielded, he yielded the floor. Sorry.
Mary O'Clemenson, Fort Cherrywood Circle. I'd like to make a couple of comments about the Senior Citizens Advisory Board and urge your strong consideration and affirmatory vote. To me, I think it boils down to four key reasons to support it. One would be that probably if you look at the percentage of the population interested in senior issues, people who are either seniors or living with them or about to be seniors is probably 20 or 30% of the population. Maplewood is using, I think it's 20 or 22% in some of their published materials, so I, I think it's easily 20 or 30%. The other thing is, just from a demographic standpoint, I'm sure you can appreciate that this is a growing, not declining demographic. So it's something that we really need to think about. Also, you know, if, if we were to go that way, I think it would support this national movement, which is called Aging in Place, which really means nothing more than being supportive and aware of the needs of seniors, older people, in keeping costs affordable. My fourth and final point is that it's just hard to imagine the downside. It's not like you're asking for volunteers for the Budget Committee, for example, where, you know, there's never enough people to do that. So to me, it's, it's really quite an easy thing to say yes to. Unfortunately, I have a fear that maybe the mayor is against it, and I'm not sure why, but I do know that there were two times in town meeting, town hall meetings in the last couple of years where I did hear the mayor say specifically that his own parents could not stay in West Orange because it just wasn't affordable. So, you know, that, that kind of comment really, you know, hit me hard, because that, I'd like to live in a place where everyone can stay and that we can make it affordable for everyone. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clemenson. Anthony?
Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Just want to give you a brief schedule of some upcoming events. First, on September 11th, at Eagle Rock Reservation at 8:00 AM is our annual 9/11 Ceremony. Also on September 11th, at the South Mountain Recreation Complex off of Cherry Lane is the South Mountain Blues Festival. That's an all-day event, starts at 11 and goes until 8 o'clock. September 4th, sorry, September 24th, at the Environmental Center, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM is our Fall Family Festival, which is the gateway into the fall season. Tuesday, September 27th, from 10 until 2 at Cody Arena is our, it's hard to believe, our 11th Annual Senior Wellness Day. And October 1st, from 8:30 to 4, is Household Hazers Waste Collection. And October 15th, from 9 to 3, is the Computer and Electronics Recycling Event. All of this is on our website, which is essexcountynj.org. Thank you.
EssexCountyNJ.org. Thank you, Anthony. Any other member of the public wish to address the town council at this time? Seeing none, any of my colleagues wish to address the town council? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Susan Anderson, Public Information Officer. I just wanted to remind the public, there are a couple of events coming up at, at OSPEC. There's a Unity Concert on Saturday, and that's from 3 to 10, I believe?
3 to 8.
3 to 8. And so, a lot of local musicians are getting together to bring the community together, so something, you know, the public should check out. Also, the following week is our 13th Annual Jazz Fest, so. We've been doing it for a minute, and we have a really nice lineup, the usual local jazz artists like Jan Carden and Nat Adderley and Bob DeVoe, and we do have some international acts, actually, like Jeff Bradshaw, the Trump bonus, it's going to be a really nice show. Jazz House Kids open, it starts at noon.
Noon.
Yeah. So it will be a really, really good show. And I think Megan already mentioned, the following week is the 5K Run, and it's 26th year. So, you know, I'll be standing there like I was last year. And so, come and check that out as well. Thank you. And I just wanted to acknowledge, as quite a few members of the NJI Board here, they work really, really hard to put on programming at OSPEC, and, you know, we're a pretty new board, most of us are under two years, I guess. You know, we kind of replaced an old board that was, I guess, burnt out after a decade of volunteering, so I wanted to acknowledge them. I think people don't realize that these people are volunteers, most of them have full-time jobs, they're professionals, and every weekend they're at OSPEC hauling garbage cans and ice. And none of us are that young, so I just want to acknowledge them and say thank you. You know, we appreciate you, even, you know, it doesn't always seem that way, and it doesn't always feel that way.
Can you guys stand up for a sec? Thank you. Another season, so September 17th, we have the Jazz Fest, right, at 12 o'clock?
Yes.
And then we have the Unity Festival, which is this Saturday, September 10th, from 3 to 8 PM. Terrific. So the same day as the Hazel Avenue School Festival, we can, afterwards or before, we can stop at the Jazz Fest. Okay, exactly.
Plenty to do.
Very good. Thank you, Susan. Okay, any of my colleagues wish to address the public at this point? Would you like to start? Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. Let me start with a thank you to Kevin and Megan Brill. It was so timely, everything that you said and the momentum. Kevin, you used that word numerous times. You can, you can feel the momentum. And I did just attend a seminar in Summit. I look forward to this one, too, Keys to Marketing. They're very informative, and you just pick up a good feeling and a lot of information on things to do, and even interesting ideas like the pins and the store visits and the Downtown Thursdays, so, so much comes out of it. Which brings me to the partnership, what I didn't mention before about the Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park. We're having our third annual Muckers Bowl on October 1st at the Thomas Edison site under the tents. This year's theme is a steampunk theme with music and dance. It's at 5:30 to whenever. So please visit Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park for more information. So please visit Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park for more information. And just to say that your remarks went hand in hand with the piece from TAP that came out this morning on real estate values in West Orange. Interesting. I appreciate even Susan Letznick making the comments on behalf of Asia Smith with the parking and trying to offer immediate solutions toward those efforts. And thanking the mayor for tackling that parking issue. Mr. Gurlin made comments about St. Mark's reconstruction and, again, about the Downtown Alliance, who brought in the efforts of reconstructing St. Mark's and how that's going along. The Downtown West Orange Alliance, the members of that pay a special assessment, you know, to be in that corridor, and the funds that they collect are reinvested in their facade and sign improvements. So it's a little bit different than having funding available. But at the street fair back in June on Edison Day, St. Mark's did have a tent. So there is an organization, Friends of St. Mark's, just like we're doing Friends of the Library and Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park. So we can, you know, make an effort to reach out to them and raise awareness for that as well. And with all the professionals that even serve on Historic Preservation Commission, there's quite a bit of expertise and insight that would be helpful. Roz and, I don't see Roz and Leslie, but I appreciate their comments as a business owner on Pleasant Valley Way. I do appreciate Roz's comments from Rabbi Altman delivering his statement, and she knows very well that that is the high priority, that's what these meetings are all about. And every issue that Rabbi addressed in his statement is being addressed. And we do thank the county for being so receptive. I'm sorry it doesn't move as fast as we need it to move, but everyone is moving in that direction. So I just feel like that is, again, raising awareness on issues. What we found out at that county meeting, if I may, was that engineering, the purpose, their task was to move traffic north to south on Pleasant Valley Way. And that was 40 years ago. And in the meantime, the township or Pleasant Valley Way grew up in the midst of that traffic. So now we're trying to backtrack on how to make it more compatible, still moving the traffic, but looking at more pedestrian safety measures. So many notes. And the Friends of, I mean, Friends of the Library, too. Dave, library director Dave Kubi giving chock-full information from the library newsletter. Thursday evening, there is a Friends meeting at the library, and I think all of the members should be encouraged to share all of that information from the newsletter out with all of their Facebook friends. I think we'll reserve comments on the Senior Advisory Board until we introduce the ordinance. And... I think everything else is about senior. And Anthony, with all the, plenty of events coming up in the fall, appreciate all of that and the beautiful ceremony planned on Sunday for 9/11, 15 years. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Yes. Hey, Castleman?
Thank you, Council President. Also, I'd like to thank Ms. Smith for talking about the parking issue. It is an issue. And with these meetings being planned, residents need not to just know about the meetings, but you need to go to these meetings and participate. Because if we have a meeting and nobody goes and nobody participates, nothing gets done. Nobody knows exactly. And you can share ideas. The Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, it's great that we have a great partnership with the county. A lot of things that Rabbi Altman put in his note that Roz Belsky told about, these are already being addressed. These are part of the grant that we're applying for. This is the support that the county is giving us to get this grant, these barriers and these controls to slow down the traffic. I mean, our ordinance that we passed two months ago to slow the speed limits in the school district is going before the county and should be approved. This is the support that we're now getting because the group is working in tangent with each area. Everybody's talking. We have the right people in this board that have the expertise, have the workmanship, have the drive and ability to move this forward and look at the township, not just this Pleasant Valley Way, but the entire township of West Orange. My kudos to the great West Orange Downtown Alliance and the great work that's being done and how they tie it in. And, you know, how we put in the realtors and how you tie it in, the fact that the development and tying in the rest of Main Street. And that's how everything, the excitement is building on Main Street. So my thank you, and also to all the work that you've done for us. And it just goes to show you, when you put a group of people together that really work hard, these are the things that are done. Mr. Gurlin with St. Mark's, I agree, it's a treasure for West Orange. And when you look at it and you think if it falls down, God forbid, you know, or it's another lost treasure that the township is losing. And it's another thing that we need to look at. From a township point of view, I know, but there are grants out there, and you've got to bring the right people together. Has the Friends of Edison have the right people together? Has the Friends at the Library have the right people? You need to pull in some more people who have the expertise to write these grants, to find out exactly, because you do know, money is very tight right now. Getting money from the government and state right now is like pulling teeth without Novocane. But, you know, it's something that we have to do. We don't want to lose that treasure because it ties into the historic values of the Main Street Corridor. And that's the way we have to look at it. The one thing I didn't mention, I should have mentioned, is that my working with the Friends of Edison, of course, I'm on the board along with Councilwoman McCartney, and the Orange, West Orange Unico. The Orange, West Orange Unico Board of Directors has approved a payment to do a pedestrian park tied into the parking lot at the Thomas Edison National Historic Park. There will be landscaping and there'll be benches put there, but there'll be one specific bench that's being put there and designed specifically for a future statue of Thomas Edison being created by Seward Johnson that will have Thomas Edison looking across Main Street to his laboratories. These are another things, how we're getting people interested in the downtown area, how we're getting people to work with us in the downtown area. So it's all about building partnerships. That's how we have to do it, and that's what we have done. Also, if Councilwoman McCartney, as my saying, with the Friends, what we've also done is that we've completed a matching grant with the National Park Service to have the machine shop restored to working order. So when visitors come now, they'll be able to actually watch the actual machines running as they did, when was the last time they were running? 20, 30 years ago or more? So, you know, this is where, you know, we've got, you know, to really build our partnerships. And Tammy, I just wanted to say thank you for everything. I was having a moment. But the thank you for the efforts you put in with the Downtown Alliance and everything and the Public Relations Commission. It's people like you that are the people that pull everything together. So thank you very much.
And OSPEC. OSPEC.
And I didn't get you, let me finish.
Okay. Just want to make sure you're not sure.
And of course, Susan Anderson, our Public Information Officer, and the people at OSPEC. You know, these are such great things to have. People are now realizing the wealth of activities, the wealth of things that are available within the township of West Orange. So all I can ever say is, with all this talking we do, is build bridges, build partnerships. That's how things get accomplished. That's how the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board got its things accomplished, Downtown Alliance, OSPEC, you know, Public Relations Commission, all these things. These are the things that we need to pull together. And to thank, and to the county, for the county's great support. The only thing, you know, as I'm saying, is great things that are coming. Make use of the zoo. You know, we're really trying to push the zoo as a catalyst to attract more businesses to the Northfield Avenue Corridor. These are all things, it's all building of what's there, not reinventing the wheel. And thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Council President, may I?
Yes.
Just one, I have so many notes here, I just overlooked a thank you from Mary O'Clemenson because she is our council budget advisory committee. So we appreciate for your years of help.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kovia?
Yes, thank you. A lot of great comments tonight, so I'm going to try, in the interest of time, to go through them very quickly. I just want to say a thank you to Mr. Cruz, not only for his report, but also for his efforts. I like the idea that you're reaching out to people with expertise who are contributing to your efforts. I like the numbers, 41 vacancies, now down to 23. I just wanted to say, one of the newer businesses is Genesis 15 Bakery, which is at 306 Main Street near the intersection of Washington Avenue. I drove past it many times thinking, oh, there's no parking. I found the parking, I went in, it's a great bakery. It's, there's plenty, and there's actually plenty of parking around if you'll spend the time, but it will be well worth it to go into the bakery. They have a mixture of what you would consider traditional American bakery products and also a wide array of what I would call Hispanic-influenced items. And I can't stop there enough, and I encourage everybody to go there. Yes, it's blowing up my diet. I was at the seniors picnic today and actually talked to residents on Watson Avenue who were also concerned about parking, and I encourage them to go door to door and discuss this issue with their neighbors and get their buy-in. Because you are going to be the most effective persuaders of the idea of improving the traffic situation. And I think it's, I agree with the mayor, I think it's going to have to be a one-way street, it's going to really open up the parking, but it's got to be door to door, neighbor to neighbor, get enough agreement to make it happen. I just want to throw in a plug for the West Orange Public Library and Friends of the Public Library Book Sale. We had a meeting there in the basement last week, and we were looking at a lot of the books that are going to be for sale for maybe $1 or $2. It is amazing. I couldn't come to the meeting and sit down because I was just going through all of the books, just thinking, I can't believe I can get this for $1 or $2. So I really, if you love books and you haven't been to the library, I encourage you to go there. Basically, the way they picked out the books was that they looked at the software and figured out who, which books weren't being checked out lately. And that's essentially how they chose them, and you just won't believe the titles. So I encourage you. Also, Mr. Kubi went through a lot of programs, a lot of activities. Just go to W O P L dot org, and all of those activities are there. And I encourage you, it sounds maybe, you know, a little weird that you want to go to the library to do this stuff, but they have great programs there, so I really encourage everyone to do that. And obviously, I'm a big proponent of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. I look forward to further discussions on it. I also want to give a shout out to OSPEC. Their Jazz Festival is just incredible. If you have any interest in jazz, that's where you have to be on the 17th. And again, encourage you to go to their website, which is not OSPEC, but it's NJAI.org. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. NJAI.org. Very good. Councilwoman, Castleman?
Okay. All right, thank you to the HPC, Mr. Gurlin, Mr. Finney, and Mr. Feuchelitz for coming down this evening. Very interesting conversation, and just to know your involvement and your activism. I know that your input is really going to leave a mark on the building. As far as St. Mark's, I just wanted to, just to ditto some of my colleague's comments about the Friends of St. Mark's Church fundraising. I think that initiative is important. If you need any help moving it along, I mean, the Friends of the Library Group, the Friends of Edison, they're all tying in together. They're working out well. But I do want to comment in regards to support to the businesses on Main Street. They also pay into a CIT tax. So a lot of, a lot of the support that they are receiving is give back from what they have paid into the program. So they do pay into the program of their assessment tax, and so I just wanted to clarify that for you. Let's see here, and staying downtown, Mr. Cruz, you know, great news, great job. And I agree with you, it is working. All the hard work from all the volunteers this summer has been inspirational. I know in my field of commercial real estate, I've been very busy. Commercial real estate market has been booming. I've been running around attending loan closings and facilitating loan closings for my company. And I was just in Hackensack last week and just having conversation, because anyone who knows me here, I always like to talk and spark up a conversation. And, you know, just explaining where I'm from and just, you have a little downtime at these closings, so you get to know people a little bit. And word is out there, there was an investor that was at one of our closings that is looking in West Orange. So very exciting, making great contacts and getting the word out, but the word is out, the vision is there. And it's exciting, and it's going to be a great couple of exciting months to come. And I appreciate Mr. Sares with all your updates. And Councilwoman McCartney, I know you took that visit, I was busy packing that morning for my son to ship back off to Delaware, so I'm looking forward to going down there in a couple of weeks, but it is exciting. One thing I would like to note, some of the work that we did do, and I have to thank Mr. Lapore again, him and I spoke a lot this summer. But Ms. Brill and him, we were able to get addresses, he was working on getting addresses for the parking lots because parking is an issue, and getting them up on Google Maps. So, you know, for all the folks who may not know where Quigley's Lot is, they, you know, they'll now have an address to Google it and find it, because there is parking there. And thank you again for the TAP article, I thought that was a great article, and I'm sure there'll be more coming. In regards to, oh, and also Ms. Brill, I neglected before to mention, we have a PR Commission meeting this Thursday night, and part of the topic of conversation will be us helping to support the walk and assisting Ms. Brill with the walk. So we look forward to that. It's open to the public at 7:00. It's right here down at the conference room. So all is welcome to come and help support the walk. In regards to the parking issue, I live on Valley Way, and there is a parking issue there as well. I hope folks are utilizing their driveways, and, you know, they are making full use of their driveways. But I do have a question for administration. I do, I do believe the one-way streets would be useful, would be a solution as well, but also, I know the fire department a few years back had did some inspections. Where, do you feel there's a need in regards to folks having illegal apartments, and that's also creating to the issue of additional vehicles on the streets?
I'm sure that exists periodically. We do deal with them. We dealt with one recently on High Street, but no, I don't believe that has any significant impact on the parking issue, no.
Okay. All right. And if someone could also check, you know, thank you to Roz for bringing Leslie down to us this evening with the concern with the guardrail by Mark &amp; Julie's. What happens there is they cut through right where that guardrail is and goes, and folks go through the gas station. And I've almost had a few near accidents myself there, so if there's any way we could talk to the property owner there to see if there's anything to resolve that issue, because that has been an issue for quite some time. Mr. Kubi, again, thank you for coming down and all the programming that is going on, and again, the money being raised is for instructional space at the library. So kudos to all who are working on that project. And also, Ms. Anderson, thank you for all your work in your committee that's here this evening. I also know you've been very busy this summer with a lot of water main breaks and getting the word out. I don't, I think folks don't realize also you are, you know, you're not just also, you know, PR, but also, you know, you're the information officer. So you have to work, you know, diligently with the police and fire department. And thank you for all your efforts this summer with that, those issues. Let's see. That is it. I don't want to be redundant, but I look forward to our conversation about the ordinance. Council President?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah.
I just want to say, when I thanked Tammy, you know, she has a full name, it's Tammy Williams, and so thank you very much.
Williams, and so thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Mayor Parisi, some remarks?
Oh, Council President, thank you. I just want to go back to the parking, I know it's an important issue in tonight's meeting, and probably surrounding a lot of neighborhoods year-round, but I've never been to Boston, so I don't know how well decals might have worked there. Besides the legal argument we could have, as to whether or not we really reserve the right to restrict parking on a public street, and I don't know that we do, the issue isn't that there's enough parking that's not being utilized by the neighbors. When you look at the Heights area, when you look at the Alphabet Streets in the Valley, and when you looked at the Colgate Cherry Street area, when we first addressed these, there are multiple families, and it's even, I don't want to say worse, but it's even more densely populated in the Heights area. Heights area has several four families, there are several six families, so decals don't help. There are more residents in that neighborhood than there are parking spots, so I'd love to be able to snap our fingers and say we can fix the parking tomorrow, it's simply not possible, and unless the neighborhood overwhelmingly supports the concept of making the one ways, there's no other solution. This is not the first time the conversation has taken place in this forum, or not the first time this conversation has taken place in town. It's been a problem for a long time, it's not unique to the Heights area, and there's just not simple solutions for houses that don't have garages, don't have driveways, and have more cars than are ample spots on the street. So, the administration heard some of the concerns from the neighborhoods, we're gonna do a meeting, but ultimately, as a lot of traffic ordinances that you pass here, it's gonna be up to the neighborhood to decide, but there are not a large menu of options to fix this problem.
Sure.
It's, just so we're all perfectly clear, there're not. So, if we can convince the neighborhood to at least try it, then we can evaluate it, and we'll see if it works, before we were to make a permit. But decals in any of the neighborhoods referenced, and I think in most of the neighborhoods in this town, aren't enough, because there's not enough spots for the number of people who live there.
Yeah, I grew up in West New York, and I remember coming home from, from school, from college, and even with a decal, you still had to drive forty-five minutes to find parking. It's just, the decal really doesn't do anything, because it's actual residents that live in that town or that neighborhood. I guess the premise is to try to push non-residents out of that little neighborhood, or that, that municipality, but, I mean, you're talking about a large area.
Other than the top of those streets that are close to Montclair, the issue with parking isn't non-residents, it's not people from other neighborhoods coming to the neighborhood, it's the number and the volume of people who live in that neighborhood, all fighting for limited number of spots.
Exactly, yeah, that's, that's a good point. Um, yeah, I just want to, thank, thank you, Mayor. I do want to thank Kevin Cruz for that great presentation on all the proactive initiatives, and it's, I mean, I don't know what to say, it's just refreshing to see so many people involved, and really committed to making sure that not only the downtown West Orange, but our community in general becomes a destination, or is a worthwhile investment, most importantly. I, I believe in that, that we're here to try to safeguard our property values, making sure that our property values not only remain, but, but they improve, it's the biggest investment that we make in our lifetimes, for some of us, and what they do is, goes a long way in making sure that that issue is being cared for. Another thing I want to mention is the Historic Preservation Committee and their, their good work. I was just talking to the mayor about a grant that we are approving today, small grant, but it'll allow us to, to hire a professional historic architect, to look for areas in the town that could be candidates for addition to the National Registry of Historic Places, St. Mark's possibly being one of them. And with that, those designations come access to preservation grants and additional monies that otherwise wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to apply for, so I just want to commend the administration, and of course, the good work that you guys do, or the preservation does, in making sure that we keep that historic character. So, just wanted to let you know that that's, that's also in the works. And I do want to ask, Councilwoman Corney mentioned that she's meeting with the grant writers tomorrow, possibly, I'm sure, I am ensuring her, that she's gonna bring St. Mark's up, and she has that on the agenda, and she's gonna be advocating for this, so you have folks up here that are proactive.
He knows them.
One more question I have, Mark and Julie's, the park, that's, the railing, is that the jurisdiction of the county, or is that part of the property?
That guardrail's on private property.
On private property, okay.
They've been noticed.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been noticed.
So, we're working on that, okay. Okay, terrific. All right, thank you all for all your comments, and we will continue to addressing some of the issues that have come up as we move forward, so thank you for being here with us. Madam Clerk?
Okay, we'll review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public and executive session minutes of August ninth, two thousand and sixteen. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Correspondence from Mayor Parisi requesting the advice and consent of the Township Council for the appointment of Victor Salama to the West Orange Public Library Board, effective immediately and continuing through December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Consent?
Consent.
Bills? Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
No? Not for me?
Madam Clerk?
I, I just have a couple, I just didn't know whether we were gonna go, Councilperson to Councilperson. No, I just had a couple I wanted to pull.
Oh, yeah, please, she's asking for any resolutions being pulled.
Could, could I please pull Agenda Item N, Resolution Two Ten Sixteen? It's the resolution rejecting the bid submitted by City of Hope International Church for township-owned land at fifty-five, fifty-seven Ridgeway Avenue, and also wanted to pull the following, one, Agenda Item O, Resolution Two One One Dash Sixteen, and it's the authorization for another bid process for, for that property.
Thank you, Councilman.
I just had a couple of other quick questions.
Sure.
I don't know whether now is appropriate time to...
Please.
One of the, one of the things I was hoping that Mr. Gross, our Chief Financial Officer, could provide is just a little bit of an explanation on Agenda Item P, Resolution Two One Two Dash Sixteen, resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with, I don't know how to pronounce this, Payargo Inc., to provide online payment electronic data management services.
Yeah, this is actually a small contract to, to a vendor who is gonna act as an intermediary between the township and our finance office, and several nationwide players in the online payment process. Right now, if you use Quicken or your bank, what happens is, is that the, the bank will send those payment instructions to one of these three companies. Those three companies, then, if you're a participant with them, and you have enough volume, they'll do online, they'll do a ACH transfer, or short of that, they will send you checks. Well, we get, we, we don't have the kind of volume to work with them, nor do we have the ability to translate what they give us, even if they were, even what they would give us electronically into an account number, for sure, to verify it, and I mean, if, if the resident got it right, and put it in correctly, then we probably could, but, you know, a good portion of the time would not. So, we've been trying to work on this, try to get, because quite frankly, it's a strain on the tax office, and quite frankly, it's, it's, the residents don't like it, because they, they, they're, they think they're paying online, so they're gonna get credit for the payment the next day, and oftentimes, we don't get the check for two, three, four days. And sometimes, if it's late, and it goes over the payment period, and they owe interest, it's just, it's, it's, it's a problem for them, that's a problem for us. So, this particular company, we've been looking for some way to get into this and solve this, and this is a particular company that we've discovered, who's just going into this, or they've been doing it for a while, and they're just, they're providing data, basically data translation. These three in-between financial institutions will be given the data to this, to this company that we're hiring, for fifteen cents a check, or a payment. They will, they will then keep track of account numbers and things of that nature, so, you know, at first, there'll be errors, then when we correct the errors, the, this company will keep track of it, so when the error comes through, they'll translate it properly to the right account numbers, and so, so we'll be able to do our online banking and receive it through ACH payments, and credit it, you know, within the next day of when, when it's paid. So, it's really a win-win for the residents and, and for us, especially since our bank is gonna pay for it, so.
Oh, the bank's gonna pay the, the fees?
Yeah.
Because it's about seven thou, you figure it's about seven thousand?
Right. Well, they, they're already, they're already waiving fifteen cents a fee for the checks we give them, so I negotiated with them to continue to pay for these, as if they were waiving it, and they, they agreed to.
Is this...
It's not quite the same, because they, they have profit built into theirs, and this is pure cost, but, but they agreed to it.
Do you expect that this will also reduce the amount of manual handling that township employs?
That's the whole point, yes, that's the whole point.
Okay. Thank you, and I just, just one more thing on Agenda Item M, it's, it's Resolution Two Oh Nine Sixteen, it's resolution authorizing an award of the contract for the library facade construction for two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. I think I speak for the other council members, we have been looking for this for a long time, I guess, you know, that's the, the facade, part of the facade fell off more than a year ago, and so it's, this is really good news. I just wondered, I, I see Mr. Lepore is not here, but can anybody just talk a little bit about what's gonna happen, and what the timetable is?
It's gonna be a typical timetable, that the, we're gonna try to get it buttoned up before winter, you know, before, before the hard part of winter, anyway.
And it's just to replace the facade?
Yes.
It's not in the extra stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I had, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yes.
We're pulling N and O, so I had a question there, but on H, with the audit, being this is my first audit, so the recommendations, what is the process for the recommendations that were made by the auditor?
Well, if you notice, I'm pleased to say that although there were three comments, they were comments about things that we were aware of. We had corrected prior, during, during the year, so we really have no, the, the action plan is in there. The, the process is, is we, you know, I present the action plan, along with the approval for the, for the budget, and then you accept that, and that goes to, to, to the state, and then we're to implement it during the upcoming year. For all of the municipal, municipal side of this, it's all done already. We, before the, the auditors, well, before they even came in, we had solved it, but since it was for ten months out of the year, they felt compelled to make comment on it, but they also noted in there that, that we had already resolved those issues with new, new and updated software.
Yeah, the software for the rec program really helped them a lot, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all, my only question.
Yes, Councilman?
I, I meant to mention this to you, this is the, the best audit I've seen since I've been on the council, so I just wanted to say kudos to you and to everybody else on the financial side, that this is a really, really good audit.
This is the best audit of my career, I have to say.
It is.
Congratulations.
You're gonna be the next.
That's right. Of course. Goes without saying.
That's right. Well, and the real truth is, is that it's, it is a, an effort of the entire organization, because we've gone from a completely decentralized processes, to now, much of it is centralized, and they've been, you know, staff have been, not, not only have they been cooperative, but in most cases, they've embraced, and it's really, we were talking about it the other day, you know, you know, when things, when things go wrong, it pops up, so the system's working, you know, because, you know, there are always problems, but the system, you know, because of the internal controls, these problems pop up, and we're able to catch them very, very early, so. Kudos, kudos to the entire staff on this.
Good.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Poll in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Councilwoman Kokovia, you pulled Resolution N, Two Ten Dash Sixteen.
Yes, thank you. I, I really want to try to work through this, because I wanted to get the ordinances ahead of the resolutions, just because there's so few of the people that I know are advocates and are interested in that, so I'll try to go through this quickly. This is two thousand, Two Oh Nine Dash Sixteen, I'm sorry, Two Ten Dash Sixteen, has to do with the property that the town has owned for several years, I don't know, maybe fifteen years or so, at the T intersection of Benvenue and Ridgeway Avenue. It's a, it's a main house, and a secondary house that I guess used to be stables, and we've been trying to, we, as a township, have been trying to figure out what to do with the property. It's in significant disrepair, and we're trying to figure out whether to knock it down or sell it off. The administration had a request for proposals, and got a proposal for a hundred thousand dollars to acquire both properties, and the administration, however, is recommending that we reject that, but I didn't get a reasoning for that, so I just wanted to sort of flag that, because a hundred thousand dollars for property that's doing nothing but further deteriorating, and it, the, the buyer, the interesting twist is, the buyer is a church in Carney, that has a parsonage for many years over on Avorn Road, which is sort of on the other side of that whole tract, and what they want to do is buy the property as a parsonage, not for a worship center, or a meeting center, or anything like that, and that would in turn return the Arven, Arverne Avenue property, Arverne Road, excuse me, back to the tax rolls, and it looks like it might generate about eighteen thousand dollars at current tax rates annually. Of course, if we do that, we'll probably take a property that, once it's refurbished, will be worth in excess of the five hundred thousand dollars or so that the Avorn property is now, but, so I just wanted to get a feel from the administration why it was, why it didn't want to accept the bid, but wanted to do another bid program. We already did it once, and we got one bid, so I'm just trying to...
Ma'am?
Yeah.
First of all, let's be clear, we, we made it crystal clear in the documents that, that were advertised. We don't need to give a reason to reject it or not, we're not making a commitment to improve the process unless we had a proposal that we were comfortable with. There's a couple of things that I'm not comfortable with, the administration discussing it at length, I think they were due several months ago, so we've been debating this for a couple months. First of all, it was clear at the several neighborhood meetings we had, with the people most vested in that property, when developing the park, and looking at these two houses, it was clear from those neighbors, many of you were at many of those meetings, that they did not want the concept of a rental. So, we were very clear in our documents, saying that we wanted someone who was interested, and quite honestly, I don't want to say this publicly, I didn't really care about the dollars, if they really were gonna meet our objectives, I think we would have taken a lot less than a hundred thousand. But that meant two single-family homes operated as two single-family homes. The one proposal we had, was sure, was gonna live in the house, but the other one was gonna be rented, and what came out crystal clear from those neighborhood meetings, because a lot of the people that were interested, even before we advertised, this goes back now to five years ago, that were reaching out to the town, developers, anyone who was interested in the property, a lot of them said, we can make, you know, make it a two-family, we can make it four-townhouses, we can do all these wonderful things, and the neighborhood, over and over again, said that's not what we want. It is, as all of you know, Councilman, you live right up the street, it is a single-family neighborhood with large lots, and they didn't want the idea of a rental. So, though I recognize that in this case, the pastor was gonna live in the one house, they were gonna rent the second house, and that's contrary to what was crystal clear in our documents, to operate and to refurbish these houses as two single-family owner-occupied houses. Secondly, was the taxes. We haven't had, collected taxes on this property forever. We've owned them since two thousand and six, but I don't know, we didn't collect taxes on them before that, because it was owned by the monastery. But, if we're gonna go through this process, to go through this process and not collect taxes, I think is contrary to what was our original goal, was to see if it's possible to return these homes to two single-family lots that fit in the neighborhood, owner-occupied, and this proposal didn't do that. So, we made it clear from the very beginning, we reserved the right to reject these bids, we wanted to see what the market could afford, it didn't meet what our objectives are. So, the reason we're asking the council to allow us to do it again was, and I think a lot of us can kind of compare... a lot of us can kind of concur, not everyone always pays attention to the public notices, I'm not sure I can find them in the ledger, if you put the ledger in front of me. So, we thought, you know what, maybe we weren't as diligent as we could have been the first time, to get the documents in the hands of every Realtor in town, and every Realtor we know in the area, to see if they had clients who would be interested. So, rather than to assume that through word of mouth, or that the public notices, that they might have gotten wind, we figured, you know what, let's do it again, but let's make sure we go to the effort of putting the documents in every Realtor's hands, to see if there's interest we didn't tap into by meeting the minimum standard of public advertising. So, bottom line is, the proposal submitted did not fill our objectives. So, we reserved the right to reject it, we're asking the council to reject it, we're going to give it one more shot, to see if we're comfortable enough to know that everyone who conceivably could be interested, at least has a chance to redo it.
If I could follow up on that, thank you very much for the explanation. I read the proposal, what I think is the proposal, earlier today, and it, it does, it says, I think pretty clearly, that they plan to use the entire property as one residential home, and it says, I'm just going to read a portion of it, I want to be clear that this property, both the main house and detached carriage house, will be used as a residential one-family home only, to be occupied by the church pastor as a parsonage. We intend to use the carriage house, lower level, for storage, typical garage usage, and the upper level as an extension of the main home, for guests, family, et cetera. The carriage house will be part of the one-family home. So, do you have information that, that they were planning on renting that? Because it's not in the proposal.
I won't quote the communication we had with, with people in, in the general discussions, but again, our goal was two single-family homes. This wasn't our objective, our objective was not met, and to return to the tax rolls. So, you can dissect it as much as you want, Councilman, we're, we're rejecting the bid, we're asking the council to agree with that. You could not agree with it if you don't want to. It did not meet what our ultimate goals were, and what we feel was a clear indication of what the neighborhood wanted, in all the meetings we had with the neighborhood, which we've always contended, they would have most input on whatever we did there, whether it was the park, or the development of these two structures.
So, I can understand the desire to have two different residential homes, but this would keep the residential nature, and I, I just want to be clear, because I would also not be particularly interested if they were planning on renting out the second property. But the, but the, the proposal that they made does not say rental.
You can vote no, Councilman, we, we've dissected this for two months, we're, we're not willing to accept this offer.
Okay. Okay. And it doesn't matter that if they did purchase it, while that would not come back on the tax rolls where it hasn't been for years, the, our Avorn property would come back?
We, we've discussed it, Council, we've talked with their representative, we're not willing to accept the offer.
Okay. Okay.
Can I ask you a question on this? The existing structure, if somebody submits a proposal that calls for demolition of the existing structure, is that part, is that something that would be considered? Or, what kind, what, what level of character are we looking to, to, to maintain? I mean, is it hard to answer that?
Councilman, you're asking kind of like, you know, hypotheticals, and I'm not sure it's fair that I answered.
Sure.
But again, the neighborhood, if the neighborhood was prepared to have them leveled, we would have leveled them four years ago, and built the whole park four acres larger than we built it.
Sure.
So, there was a lot of concern from people on that subcommittee that was formed to look at it, to do everything possible to preserve those properties.
Okay.
As single-family homes. So, I think if someone came back with a proposal to level them and build new homes, I don't think that would, that, that doesn't, that doesn't meet the objective, and it would probably.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. That answers my question, Madam Clerk.
Question?
Yes.
Have you done an appraisal on those parcels?
Only, not from an official appraisal, we made an evaluation with the staff internally, but I don't know the numbers on top of it.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 210 dash 16?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino? Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kokoviac?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Kokoviac, you pulled 211 dash 16.
Right, there's no, there's no reason to, to further discuss this, from my perspective, if the other council people want to, but obviously, we have to have another, another bid, if we rejected this one.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, is there a motion to approve Resolution 211 dash 16?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
Ordinances on second and final reading, 24 dash, I'm sorry, 2490 dash 16, and ordinance amending Chapter 14, Section 8.2A of the Revised General Ordinances, failure to comply with ice, snow, or glass removal enforcement. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
Any, any member of the public wish to address the Town Council on this ordinance at this time? 2490 dash 16. Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
I will.
Okay.
May I? Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, this morning, there was a lot on Belgrade Avenue, a tree came down, and DPW was out there clearing the lot. There are five lots on Belgrade Avenue, two are privately owned and three are public. Thankfully, no one was hurt, the tree went right behind the backyard, there's very little damage, no one was hurt, very little damage to the neighbors, they were all out. It's not necessarily in this ordinance, but I believe that the tree that came down is on one of the private lots, so, and it did need to be cleared. Is that, I'm sure you're well aware of this tree, they were out there for hours trying to clear it, the tree was enormous. Is this tip, I mean, this would be what this ordinance is about, that now we can go back to that?
It's, it's more than that, Councilwoman, it's when people are negligent in providing the services they're supposed to provide, it has a negative impact on the neighbors.
This was.
We had a well-documented case this summer where the house, you know, we did a lot of work in cleaning the property. We have this ordinance already, this language, and I don't have it in front of me, to be honest with you, but this language is really tightening up an ordinance we already had on the books for this purpose. I, I don't know what lot that tree fell on today, I thought, and you remember, don't we own two of them?
We own three of them.
We own three of them.
We own three, and two, and that's why I think this is one of the private lots.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, but we'll get the report from Public Board to send them again.
No, it didn't mine out.
Didn't go that way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2490 dash 16?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
Okay, ordinances on first reading, 2491 dash 16, and ordinance creating Chapter 2, Section 62 of the Revised General Ordinances, entitled Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
And then, we have an ABC hearing to go into. Do we need a motion to?
Well, like, could we have discussion?
Not on first reading, it's always on the second reading.
We do need to vote, though.
No, we, I'm sorry, you do need to vote, that's true, but there's usually no discussion on introduction.
But there's no rule against it, if, if Councilwoman Castellino wants to discuss that, if, if it's up to the Council President, but it'd be fine with me.
So, we're going to take a vote?
We are going to take a vote.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. Councilwoman Castellino?
Is there a motion to introduce?
Okay, because I, well, I have some questions for administration.
Prior to the vote?
Yeah.
That's up to you, Council President.
But I thought you already asked those questions.
Huh?
I thought you already had asked those questions.
I, I just like to get the administration's response on this.
I'm just, I just don't like to start precedent, it's not what I, it, it just throws off in the public, you know, it criticizes us for really not following protocol.
Well, Council President, if I can have a word, and I brought this up the last time we were here, I don't have a sense that there's a lot of support for this, and I could be wrong, maybe there is, and I don't know about it, but my concern is, if there's going to be language changes, in order to make it acceptable, it ought to be discussed.
Correct.
So.
And it needs to be introduced, in order to get there.
Well, either way, I don't care if you introduce it and then talk about it, or talk about it and then decide whether or not to introduce it, it really doesn't make any difference, but, you know, unless there's support for it, what are we doing?
Right, so let's introduce it, to see there's support for it, so that we can work on crafting a policy that makes sense. So, let's take a vote. Madam Clerk?
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
I'm going to vote no, but I do want to state, the language changes that I, the reason why I have to vote no, there's a lot of language changes with this particular ordinance.
Okay, Councilwoman Garino?
I concur with Councilwoman Castellino, there are things in language that need to be looked at, and so, at this point in time, until the language is a change, I would vote no.
Councilman Kokoviac?
I'll just point out, before I vote, based on the comments by my colleagues, that we have had well over a month, I've requested comments, and from both the administration and my colleagues, the version of this has been out there for weeks and weeks, and I have heard not a single suggestion on how it should be changed. And now, at the time that it's being introduced, Councilwoman Castellino seconds the motion and then votes against it. But, if this, if anybody had any problems with the language, they have had well over a month to bring them up, so I'm just, I'm surprised, and maybe even shocked, that, that these are the comments. When, why are they a secret? The whole purpose of this process is to submit the proposed legislation, and have people look at it and comment on it before it comes, before first reading. And there was absolutely none. So, I'm, I'm voting to approve this.
I sent an email on Friday, so don't say there was absolutely none, I had, I had responded to an email, that's all I'm going to state, because.
You, you asked questions in that email of the administration, and not me, and you proposed no language changes at all.
Councilman, can we, can we, can you express your vote?
Sure, sure.
Go ahead, can you express your vote?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Well, as far as no comments being made, I was quoted in The Chronicle, and I think this suits best, that says McCartney wants to avoid redundancy and waste of resources. So, I think in theory, the board makes sense, but in all practical purposes, I think it is redundant, and I think it is a waste of resources, since I was just singled out this evening at Public Comment. Just to clarify, the comments that I made, I have owned a First Mountain preschool on Pleasant Valley Way for 20 years, I am deeply involved with the parents, and many of the grandparents that have been in the program for 20 years, that assist in childcare. So, it's not just because people make phone calls, I deal, I talk to people on a daily basis, if any comment or request was made, it was always brought to the administration's attention. So, I really do think it's redundant, I think, just like tonight's meeting was so full of information, that if there was a concern, and I was at the, I guess I talked to different people, but I know I went to every table today at the senior picnic, the comments that I received were quite different, and even polling my neighborhood, it's been not necessary, if they have a concern, they know how to use the phone. We have even on our website, comments can be made directly to the council, or to the administration. There have been courses that have been requested, that are still in place, there's a knitting club we put in place 15 years ago, that's still meeting 10 o'clock every morning on Thursdays, when the seniors asked about going from ShopRite to Whole Foods, so that they can see that shopping plaza, that was also in place. Just recently, when the gentleman came that wanted to go to the pool five days a week, that was put in place. When this topic came up, the one question I asked was, are there concerns that have not been addressed? And not one person today, I still have not heard any concerns that are not in place. I do believe in aging in place, I believe it is on everyone's radar, the comments that were made, even in the paper, and even at the comments I made in August, that when I talk about, it's not just the Health Department, it's the Police Department, it's the Fire Department, again, comments that were made today about the Fire Department, everyone, seniors are not excluded, everyone is here to support the seniors, even the library now, looking at my notes. So, my vote would be no, because I don't think it's necessary, I think the administration and the council has been very accessible to every resident, not just seniors, and we would look at putting anything in place that is necessary for our seniors. My vote would be no.
Thank you.
Council President Cirillo?
No.
The motion fails.
Madam Clerk, make a motion to move on to ABC Board? Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Any opposed?